I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Here.
Mayor Vandermark?
Here.
Councilmember Strickland?
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Huntington Beach Police Department Captain Riley.
Please stand at your table and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation will be led by our Fire and Police Captain Roger Wing.
Would you please pray with me as we begin this evening's meeting? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight and to be involved in establishing direction for our wonderful city. We pray that you would guide and direct each council member this evening as they address the items on the agenda. May you give each one wisdom, patience, understanding, and lead us all by your Spirit to do what's good and right for our city. And Lord, that we'll be able to gracefully discuss these issues with a spirit of peace, respect, and dignity. Lord, we have a very big day coming up in a couple of days with our 120th Fourth of July Parade. It's a great event for our city that attracts up to half a million people, is the largest Fourth of July Parade west of the Mississippi. While the parade is a great opportunity for our city and the many visitors who come as we celebrate our country's freedom and independence, it's also a day that presents some significant challenges. So we want to lift up everything that will go on at the parade and the other activities of the day to you, Lord. We ask for your safety, protection, and blessing for all that will occur. We pray for our police, fire, and marine safety personnel, who will be out in full force to keep everyone safe. We pray that today will be a wonderful and peaceful day for families and friends to come together to enjoy the great weather as they line up along the parade route. We pray that our beaches would be filled and safe, and we pray that you would help our city businesses to flourish. At the end of the day, may we be able to give you thanks for a wonderful day that does our city proud. As those in our community step forward to speak tonight, Lord, we ask that you would guide them to share their comments and views with dignity and respect. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing and protection on every member of our Huntington Beach family. We ask your blessing, provision, encouragement, and protection on each council member and their families. We ask your guidance and wisdom for each of our city leaders and for all of our city employees who so faithfully and diligently serve us all. Bless our meeting this evening, and may your peace and wisdom guide all that occurs tonight. And we ask this in your wonderful and precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Moving on to closed session reports, do City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Announcement of supplemental communications, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. For tonight's meeting, consent calendar item seven, a memo received or not a memo, but just the table of the June 2024 Boards, Commissions, and Committees and Regional Agencies' Report was submitted by me and uploaded into our Legislature app. For item 10, an email communication received regarding Assembly Concurrent Resolution 182, The Great Pacific Garbage Patch. For consent item 11, two email communications received regarding the proposed naming of Shipley Nature Interpretive Center as the Shirley Detloff Interpretive Center. Councilmember items number 13, planning by ballot research paper received from Councilmember Kelmick regarding the proposed charter amendment Environmental Protections for General Plan Amendments, 18 email communications regarding the same item, and an email received from the Huntington Beach Auto Dealers Association regarding the proposed charter amendment. And that's it.
Thank you. Prior to moving on to public comments, I'd like to make an announcement. Anybody who would like to speak, we need you to be here in person to fill out your speaker forms. We're trying to be fair to everybody. We've had people come over and say, I was the first one here, and there were 10 people ahead of us. So from now on, you'd have to fill out your own form and be here present. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. At the time, we have 39 speakers signed up to speak.
Okay, we'll do two minutes per speaker.
Okay.
At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless a volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion on action or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@servcity-hb.org. Could you please call the first 10?
Yes. The first 10, come on down. Jeannie Paris, Wendy Rincon, Pat Goodman, Ann Palmer, Amory Hansen, Butch Twining, Sophia Beckett, Carla Fuchs, George G., Cheryl Browning.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hello, sorry. Hello, my name is Sophia Beckett, and I am the junior captain of the HBHS color guard team. At the end of May, we were honored by the mayor during the Mayor Spotlight Awards following a remarkable competitive season where we were crowned gold medalists for our winter guard competition competitive show, beating over 60 teams across Southern California. Due to our success, we will now be attending WGI World Championships in April of 2025 for the first time in our school's history. This is a huge honor for their team, for our team, and why we are here today. We are in the midst of a huge fundraising campaign to raise the $42,000 it will cost to get the team to Dayton, Ohio for World Championships. We are reaching out to the council, and members of the community help to help achieve our goal of competing at World Championships. We have many fundraisers planned and currently selling firewood after receiving a donation of pallets and wood scraps. We have already sold lays for graduation, have dinot days planned, candy and popcorn sales, and a long list of other fundraisers to hold over the next nine months. But we really need our community sponsors, both in dollars and in product we can use for a silent auction. Our Booster Club is a 501(c) nonprofit organization, and all donations are tax deductible. We have a tiered sponsorship program where we are happy to share and accept donations via our booster website, Venmo, cash, and checks. We are also looking for a location to hold a car wash where the water costs can be a donation to the program. We have brought a stack of information cards that have a QR code that will take you to our website and our donation pages. There you can have, make a donation, or contact us about a sponsorship opportunity. Please consider helping us represent Huntington Beach on the world stage by making a donation or becoming a sponsor. We are very excited and humbled to be able to experience the path to World Championships, and we know the time spent on this journey will be formative for all involved. We look forward to seeing many of you on the Fourth of July as we spin our way down Main Street, representing the best city in America. And first off, I also cut out for time, actually, I'm done. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager. My name is Butch Twining, 58-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Agenda Item Number 24479. I want to, I might jump around just a little bit here. I might, I want to address, one of the local Facebook forums compared us to Yorba Linda and ran videos and stuff. I just want to tell you the difference between Yorba Linda and Huntington Beach. Yorba Linda is a 20-square-mile city. They were given a RINAs allocation of 2,415 units, which works out to about 120 units per square mile. Huntington Beach, on the other hand, is not that much bigger, 32 square miles, and our RINAs number was 13,368, or 417 units per acre. I think the RINAs numbers are wrong, and I support our City Council's efforts to fight that number. Now, Mr. Kelmick put a supplemental communication in the package today, and it's by the SPUR Organization, so I decided I would read it. SPUR is a San Francisco-based planning and urban research association who defines their organization as a think tank focused on urban policy in the San Francisco Bay Area. Now, I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't want Huntington Beach to look anything like San Francisco Bay. How about we focus, how about we focus on urban policy in Huntington Beach? And I read it, Mr. Kelmick. Authors of the report was a woman named Amanda Brown Stevens, which is a Green advocate, Paul Campos, who's a radical leftist law professor, Mai T. Nguyen, who's a psychiatrist, Ned Levine, who's a Berkeley psychologist, Berkeley graduate psychologist. I just, I don't know how that, how that, you know, translates into Huntington Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and City Council. Please vote no on item 13 because such a charter amendment will weaken local control of housing development and break the law. It will be nearly impossible to plan for any housing development in the future. If you vote in favor of this item, you are putting the property owner's financial security at risk by causing an unstable, unpredictable housing environment. In fact, I believe this council is not addressing the housing needs of its residents, which in itself is contributing to negative environmental impacts from overcrowding and negative impacts on aging infrastructure and aesthetics of a neighborhood, air pollution resulting from long commutes. The council needs to come up with its own housing needs assessment if they're rejecting the RINAs assignment, and a working plan to address the housing needs of its residents. Such an action shows good faith to voters that you take your responsible, your responsibility for running the city seriously. Without such a plan, we're in the dark and putting at risk the financial security of current homeowners, businesses, and taxpayers. You will show to voters that you want to address housing blight and decay and the lack of affordable housing stock in our city by developing a housing plan of your own making. Please vote no on 13 and present an alternative motion to address the housing needs of Huntington Beach. Have a great Fourth of July celebration for this wonderful country and the place we call home, Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wendy Rincon, 50-year resident. We had several study sessions regarding the past charter amendments that were passed for the primary. Will there be any study sessions for this charter amendment? As I recall, the majority four, you ran on no charter amendments, and yet we've had three, and now there's a fourth. Will there be study sessions? Because the way it's written, I think a lot of us are, I don't know, maybe somewhat confused. What is your true point here? I mean, I think, I think the point is, you want to try to inoculate us against what the state is asking us to do. So, there's already a case, so how much of our time are we going to be spending on not solving the housing problem? Because there have been no solutions to solving either the unhoused or affordable housing. I want our workers to have a workforce housing. I want our police to be able to live here, our fire, our teachers, heck, even my own kids, maybe your kids too. So, I would like to see some actual action taken that's not just a bunch of amendments that you think are going to placate your base. Secondly, I spoke to several members at our last meeting. Before you spoke and said, we need to come together as a community, and we do, but you saying it is different than doing it and showing it. Before the meeting, you talked to all of your people over there. We're over here too. Come say hi to us. We are part of the community, just like they are, just like you are. We're all neighbors, are we not? Let's start treating each other like neighbors and not like enemies. We are not fighting against one another for the betterment of Huntington. We're all suffering for it. With that, please sign the petitions to no longer allow the City Council to ever try to privatize our library, which is a nonpartisan issue. We all use a library. And have a wonderful Fourth of July. And there are two petitions. Sign them.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Carla Fuchs, and when the city of Huntington Beach was forced to make some dire budget cuts, Shipley Nature Center was closed and locked on October 2002. Shirley Detloff saw the importance to keep Shipley open and formed the Friends of the Shipley Nature Center and was able, with assistance of many others, open the center. Her role was vitally important, and the visitors can now enjoy a restored Shipley Nature Center and keeps her vision going. Shirley had a restored and open Shipley Nature Center a reality. She took action. It would be fitting to dedicate the Interpretive Center after her so that the memory keeps going and friends can keep the gates open for the enjoyment of the citizens of Huntington Beach and also visitors from other states and actually from abroad. This would be something that would be, that she should be acknowledged for her accomplishments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Vandermark, Mayor Pro Tem Burns, and council members. My name is Jeannie Paris, longtime resident of Huntington Beach. Mine is a real simple message. I am here in strong support of item 13, adding a proposed charter amendment to be voted on by our citizens this November. I quote, "City planning and zoning is a local municipal affair beyond the reach of state control or interference, and city planning and zoning is a local activity reserved for the city and its people, not the state." This is brilliant. Couldn't have said it better. Happy birthday, Huntington Beach. No, not happy birthday, Happy Independence Day! Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mad Mayors. My name is Mr. Amory Hansen. I'm speaking tonight in strong support of item 13, the Mayor and Councilman Burns and McKeon's proposed charter amendments. It is truly unfortunate that California, the home of Mr. John Muir, has pursued a policy of aggressive pursuit of high-density malarkey, even at the expense of nature, what Mr. Muir once called, quote, "man's true home," end quote. This item will ensure that Huntington Beach's long legacy of environmental protection is continued and that we, the people, continue to conserve the natural resources of California. Let's continue to fight in the hills of Orange, in the valleys of Los Angeles, and in the bridges of San Francisco. A true environmentalist would vote for this item. Given Huntington Beach's long environmental legacy, I predict that the proposed measure will receive the most votes in favor of a measure in the history of Huntington Beach. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item 13. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Ann Palmer, 30-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach. I am here to support Agenda Item Number 10. This is thoughtfully and well-researched proposal. Thank you, IRC, and thank you, council, for this position. Also, item number, it doesn't show there, Agenda Item Number 13, 24-479. I strongly support a charter amendment that provides environmental protection for general plan amendments. This also speaks to the need for local control of zoning and the vote of residents for plans that pose significant negative impact. Thank you. I've been at this a long time, and I really appreciate it. We need this, and I urge everyone to read the proposal, the proposed amendment, especially about the negative impacts to the environment and the municipal affairs for city planning and zoning. As a reminder, dense development has consequences. It has safety issues and environmental issues. Developers in California build beyond capacity. Sites deemed against geological advice for even single dwellings are now sought after for multifamily structure developments, especially in PV. Dwelling in space affects human well-being. I've done a lot of research. I have a lot of resources on this, 11 cited. Studies show place and space impact health and well-being of residents. Quality green and open space adjacency are major requirements. Visible horizons and avoiding urban sun occlusion are key. Older, classically designed urban spaces, in conclusion, are better than the new model.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm going to address a gross speech discrepancy that I heard last council meeting from the left. One actually came up and congratulated, congratulated the former mayor Carr for winning, winning her court case, her court case. Excuse me? Was that a reference to the case Ms. Carr dragged our city into by her rash, single-handedly unwise cancellation of the airshow with only a few days prior notice? Her case forced the city taxpayers to pay $5 million in a settlement, all because of Ms. Carr's self-aggrandizing attempt to virtue signal her environmental outrage without thinking through the grave consequences three steps down the road. She showed her leftist superiority by insinuating that our excellent city workers were incapable of keeping people out of the water for an airshow, and that the HB public just wasn't bright enough to follow caution directives and common sense. So, remember, Ms. Carr said, I quote, "I am going to fundamentally change Huntington Beach." Well, I guess that's a mission accomplished. We are now $5 million poorer, $5 million less for roadwork, goods, services, repairs, purchases, et cetera. No congratulations are in order here. On a positive note, thanks to our excellent city attorney for stopping the leftist destruction at only $5 million. It could have been a lot more. A true congratulation to Michael Gates and his team. I also want to say thank you to our fabulous four, who are duly elected and by the majority of the Huntington Beach citizenry. While the sore-losing leftists keep complaining, denying, blaming, recruiting, whining outsiders to speak here, these four have rolled up their sleeves and gotten to work addressing important issues.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see you again. I met you at church, Calvary Chapel, Huntington Harbor. Tony, you were there. Pat Burns, bonjour mon ami, comment ça va? Bueno, I mean, bien. I speak Japanese and Arabic as well. But council members, Mike, you're doing a great job. Don't let the librarians try to put you down. You got a Juris Doctor degree. You can, you can, they're out there signing petitions saying that we're, that the books are being banned, which is false, of course. And I was just there yesterday and today, this morning, doing some research on the Navigation Center, because there's been some improper funding to the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that I'm aware of. I mean, if you're not a grant writer, then you wouldn't know these things. I would like to bring it up with the mayor in private. I'm not going to explain now, but actually, I say George G. because I want to remember Nicole G. that was killed in Afghanistan. And I have some black soldiers that were killed by terrorist drones in Jordan, but nobody can remember. This was only January 2024. Abraham Lincoln once said, "A country that does not honor its military heroes does not remain a country for long." And with that, I would like to pledge, I would like to recite the preamble to the U.S. Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide...
Thank you, sir. All right. The next group, the next group of 10, Jose Luis Acosta, Tim Gettys, Mary Anne, David Reinerson, Russ Neal, Ryan Messick, Charles Jackson, Joe Edo, Chad Williams, Christopher
Go ahead, Mr. Gettys.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Gettys on the observation deck. I would like to preface my remarks by registering my opposition to the proposed charter amendment, item unlucky number 13, as discussed in my previous communication to the council. Once again, the council majority is trying to weaponize the city charter process as it did with Measures A and B. This is not good government. It should be withdrawn. Now, as alluded to in news articles, letters to the editor, and social media, last month's concluding council meeting included the, included the kind of indoor fireworks we would hope not to see on Independence Day. It included the trolling of Councilmember Dan Kelmick and his two minority colleagues, deliberately provoking arguments to cause drama and get a rise out of their mega minion base. I call it daisbaiting. Added, added to this is the public perception that our city council has been hijacked, or what I would call pirated, to the, by a band of partisan buccaneers who have turned a blind eye and a deaf ear to the best interests and wishes of the community. This civic keel-hauling two weeks ago showed that the, that the true flag of the council majority should be the Jolly Roger. We are all diminished by the council majority's behavior. They will eventually get rung up. Therefore, never, never send to no for whom the bell trolls, it trolls for thee. Yo ho, yo ho.
Thank you.
the city charter process as it did with Measures A and B. This is not good government. It should be withdrawn. Now, as alluded to in news articles, letters to the editor, and social media, last month's concluding council meeting included the, included the kind of indoor fireworks we would hope not to see on Independence Day. It included the trolling of Councilmember Dan Kalmak and his two minority colleagues deliberately provoking arguments to cause drama and get a rise out of their mega minion base. I call it dais baiting. Added to this is the public perception that our city council has been hijacked, or what I would call pirated, to the, by a band of partisan buccaneers who have turned a blind eye and a deaf ear to the best interests and wishes of the community. This civic keel-hauling two weeks ago showed that the, that the true flag of the council majority should be the Jolly Roger. We are all diminished by the council majority's behavior. They will eventually get rung up. Therefore, never send to no for whom the bell trolls. It trolls for thee. Yo ho, yo ho. Happy Fourth.
Go ahead.
David Reinerson. Mr. Strickland and Mr. Gates, you keep citing the city of Redondo Beach as a precedent for the city's voter ID ordinance. Well, I spoke to the city of Redondo Beach, and the only commonality between Redondo Beach and Huntington Beach is that they both concern municipal elections. In order to de-conflict with any county, state, or federal election, Redondo runs their municipal elections in odd years, not in even years like other elections. So they have zero impact on those other elections. They also coordinate with the LA County Register of Voters to use their registration system and their drop boxes. Why would they be using drop boxes if it was a voter ID requirement, you might ask? It's because Redondo Beach does all their municipal elections entirely by vote by mail. So how do you think that supports your proposal of picture ID for in-person voting? Stop selling your continual selling of us at the Britlin Bridge and try attempting to govern in a responsible and cooperative manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, I just want to start off. I'm not as eloquent as him, so I'm just going to say Latinos for Trump. And let's, let's, let's free Steve Bannon. Okay, so, you know, he's paying the price for a lot of the majority here that we, as patriots, we're just lucky to be living in a country where we can actually have a First Amendment right and express ourselves as I am able to do now because many people have died for this right. So let's, let's give praise to many of the people that sacrificed their lives for us for Notre Dame. They'll go around the corner, go to In-N-Out, and take it home and enjoy our lives. Because you'd be surprised how many people don't even realize how much liberty we have unless they lose it. And we're on the verge of losing it. So we gotta do what we have to do. We gotta come, man up. Steve Bannon's in jail now, so it's the next man up. Let's do it. So I'm saying, I'm here just saying that we all know that the voting machines are rigged and we know that the machines are on the internet and we know that foreign nationals are remotely still in our elections. And that's no bullshit, okay? And we're no longer going to take that bullshit anymore. We're not, we're no longer the sheep. We're no longer sheeple. We're wide awake and there's millions of us, okay? Just know, I'm just one of many awakened, okay? And we know that you principalities that are currently in power, we know what's the deal. And there's more of us than of you guys. So that you know, you better be scared and you better repent because I'm telling you, you're going to hell. You're going to hell, my brothers, if you don't repent. Ask Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior because I'm telling you what, if you don't want to burn for eternity, you better repent and let these people vote where they should be. One day voting, paper ballots, and counted on the same night. Not no, not no, not no fucking three, three weeks or a month. Fuck that bullshit. We're going to take that no more. We're no longer going to take that no more. And all these police officers, you better do and listen to the Constitution.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I say something as a point of order? I would appreciate it if people were not swearing and if you could manage that, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Next speaker. Go ahead. Oh, just a second. Go ahead.
Hey, my name's Ryan Messick and it's, I'm talking about something that's not on the agenda today, but I'm here in opposition of the Tank Farm development. That being on the same property as ASCON. I was a big advocate for the ASCON deal. And I got, I paid the price for that. There's a few gentlemen that spoke up. One guy, Castle Man, I know he spoke up and he almost burned alive in his bed in his stone house. And I know what happened to me and my family after that. And that testimony is going to the proper authorities. What I'm saying is I don't care if Shopoff bribed you, bullied you, Epstein'd you, or funded your campaigns or bought you a new pool or what he did. If you look at what he was doing in Anaheim, he was a big, big, he had some red flags by the FBI for what he was doing in Anaheim. And he left that mayor high and dry, and that guy's doing fed time. And if you're doing the same things with him here for the, for the Tank Farm development. See, what happened is they convinced us at ASCON all those toxic chemicals were contained by unlined landfill, toxic, the most disturbing, toxic, cancer-causing substances in the world are on that property. And this is joined with Tank Farm. It's the same property. You cannot develop on that land. A mother that moves on that property at Tank Farm and lives there may not get cancer, but her baby in the womb as she bathes in that water and is outside on that land and breathes in that chemicals, it's called transgenerational. That baby has reproductive organs. And that baby will be mutated. And her babies will be mutated. And this will go on many years after ASCON sells that property and the city will be held liable for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Charlie Jackson, a 23-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm worried about the builder's remedy. Please don't let it happen. Blaming Sacramento for overreach will not stop the builder's remedy from happening. Only you, the city council, can stop it from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Chris Reeney here, Huntington Beach native resident. And I'm here to speak out against Agenda Item 13. I'm against this item because of costs and poor governance. Now, we just had a cause celebre over outsourcing librations due to financial need. The March 2024 primary allegedly cost close to $400,000. If we're on this precipice of financial need, where are we finding the money to add more things to ballot measures? And all the ballot measures I found on Ballotopedia, with one exception for Mendocino County, they cost more than a new car. Finances aside, this is just poor governance. Now, zoning is a Byzantine thing. I do not understand it at all. I used to work as a historic preservation advocate in trying to find lot assessment numbers from the 1890s and cross-reference them was just meh. I get it. And housing codes are worse. It's probably something that's simply designed for the major politicians in Los Angeles so they can make money from the developers, but that's another story. Ultimately, it's up to the professionals and I don't feel in my heart of hearts that putting this to a populist vote is the right thing. You don't, when you have cancer, you go to an oncologist. You don't just Google alternative cancer therapies because there are things that the professionals are better at than we are. And that's not being snobby. It's just knowing we all have things that we can do well that other people can't do and vice versa. Huntington Beach is not a sovereign nation. We have national, state, and county laws that we must abide by. That is our civic duty and that is being patriotic. To take a difficult, complicated, nuanced executive issue and make it into a popular vote reads like shirking executive duty. It reads like passing responsibility to others and just a bad veld attempt at nimbyism. This is disrespectful and Huntington deserves better. Thank you and have a safe and happy Fourth.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and council members. My name is Russell Neal and I live in Huntington Beach. 248 summers ago, in Independence Hall, was brought forth a nation soon to be the envy of all. Blessed by sweet Lady Liberty and founded on God's righteous law, a law that said, "All are created with rights unalienable, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, all attainable." And it hasn't worked out perfect nor always been ideal, but our success and prosperity are still very real. For despite naysayers aplenty who complain and grouse and bleat, an endless stream of people still come and find our promise sweet. Yet now we are engaged in great partisan stress. Is there any way out of this unhappiness? While men's hearts are failing and they're at the end of their rope, are there any words to be given that might provide them hope? If my people will hear me and turn from their pride and humble themselves before me and lay their sin aside, then from heaven I'll hear them and with my healing hand will come to them swiftly and rescue their troubled land as I have done for your fathers so many times before. Turn to me, my people, and find my salvation once more. Thank you. God bless you and God bless America.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann and I live in Cerritos in Los Angeles County. I wanted to say that I am very proud of the people of Huntington Beach and for all the efforts that they're making to change their city for the better. Thank you, Mayor Vandermark, Councilmembers Burns, Strickland, and McKinnon for taking a stand to represent and fight for the people of Huntington Beach. I am here to observe and learn from this council on how to take back our cities from abusive, from abusive counties and out-of-control state legislatures. You are leading the way for Southern California on election reform and other important issues. You are the example that we in other cities can look to. If you can do it, then so can other cities in California. You are an encouragement. Thank you and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Joe Ito. I've been an HB resident for 20 years and I'm here today representing Concerned Women for America, an organization that advocates for constitutional principles and biblical values in government through prayer and action. I'd like to thank you, city council members, for continuing to fight for election integrity in our city. A group of us have presented to some of you with strong evidence of fraud based on OC Registrar of Voters' very own data. And yet, the county refuses to work with us to make changes. Thank you again for your efforts to bring back election integrity in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It has been said that bad policies have bad consequences. And what an example we have with the mandates that Governor Newsom has shoved down the throats of Huntington Beach with 13,368 units of high density. And this number really doesn't know justice because according to the Builders' Remedy Act, about 8,100 of those units are going to be included at a 20% inclusionary rate. Translation, it's going to take north of 40,000 units to satisfy that number. Bear in mind, we are a city that is 95% built out. And so what would that do to our community? Talk about the undesired changes. Talk about the irreversible damage that that would do to our environment. So much so, Sacramento acknowledges this and requires our city council to sign a document of overriding consideration. Translation, what they're saying is that the needs of high-density developments outweigh the needs of protecting our environment. Newsom certainly doesn't love us, but I know three people that do love him. One, two, and three. The Newsom threesome. So much so that they actually voted in favor of the needs of high-density development outweighing the needs of protecting our environment. To quote Dan Kalmak from the Dais, he quoted, he said, "I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the statement of overriding consideration. I know that the Attorney General's office is watching, so I'd like to be on record going ahead and approving this plan." So concerned was Sacramento watching you, all while forgetting that the citizens of Huntington Beach are watching you. And so to the Newsom threesome, we will not allow you to sell us out. November 5th, we're going to vote you out. The citizens of Huntington Beach are going to speak up and I hope that you guys all understand that help is on the way for Huntington Beach. November 5th, remember these names. Chad Williams, Don Kennedy, and Butch Twining. God bless you all and happy Fourth of July.
All right. Next 10 speakers. John Scandura, Ken Smith, Adam Wood, Perry Clitheroe, Mary H., George A., Linda M., Nancy M., Michelle M., Lisa H. Please come down and begin your speech.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Vandermark, City Council. I am John Scandura, president of the Friends of Shipley Nature Center, which operates the nature center for the city. I offer my support for Item 11, naming the Shipley Interpretive Center building after the late former mayor Shirley Detloff. Without her, there would be no Shipley Nature Center today. The nature center opened in 1975 as a natural area for park visitors to enjoy and learn about native fauna and flora. In 2002, facing a budget crisis and deferred maintenance, the city decided to close the nature center. Councilmember Detloff wanted to save Shipley and explored having volunteers operate it for the city. She invited 30 people to a meeting to see if they would undertake this endeavor, which they did. Their three-year renovation cleared tons of invasive plants and overgrown vegetation, replaced beetle-infested pines with tory pines, created new trails, and opened a demonstration garden. The nature center reopened in 2005 and now has 45 dedicated volunteers and three paid staff to maintain it for 12,000 annual visitors. Shirley was active in the Friends of Shipley Nature Center and served on its board until 2019. She created exhibits for the interpretive center and brought in Orange County Department of Education's Inside the Outdoors program. Under this program, 14,000 students from throughout the county visited Shipley last year, many coming from areas with few parks and natural areas. The nature center also holds educational programs, speaker events, plant sales, compost seminars, and the popular Cool Summer Night series. Without Shirley Detloff, Huntington Beach would not have this gem of a resource. I ask for your approval to name Shipley's interpretive center for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ken Smith. I live on Orange and I've been here about eight years. And I'm going to talk about a boring subject, but very important that we all take for granted. This is to really call out what a great job the Public Works Department is doing here in Huntington Beach. In fact, just two weeks ago, the grand jury that just adjourned last week published six reports and Huntington Beach was mentioned in at least three of them, about recycling, about e-bikes. And the one I was particularly interested in was the Water and Wastewater report. It's about emerging opportunities in water and wastewater. And right under the reason for study on page seven of this report, which is online at oczgrandjury.org, I'll just read this word for word just to make sure we get it right because it's very important. "Media coverage has highlighted various water agencies raising rates to address escalating water costs, aging infrastructure, lack of upgrades, and deferred maintenance. The condition of water and wastewater infrastructure must be regularly assessed for an effective capital improvement program to maintain its optimum performance." And this is where, this is my language, Huntington Beach has excelled because the very next sentence says, "A recent example is the proactive April 16th, 2024 Huntington Beach Water/Wastewater Rate Report Proposal, which is needed to ensure reliable water and wastewater systems through 2040." And it's referenced as Item 6 and the report itself is posted on the website as part of the grand jury report. So again, I want to applaud the Public Works Department and what you're doing in being proactive and addressing these needs early on so at the last minute, like things that happened recently in San Juan Capo, Toronto, don't happen here. And the last thing, which I wasn't going to talk about, but I heard talk about voter ID and registration. To me, it's such a logical issue that you're fighting back against what Sacramento is trying to do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Mary and I have been an Orange County resident for over 50 years. We are volunteers with the United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen sharing alarming information about our state's voter database, uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they do not add up. Just like your checkbook must balance so much our votes. If you had $10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had that significant a discrepancy in their books, they would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Georgia Garing. Our audit of the 2022 election using only official data provided by state elections, officials show that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. officials show that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate won over another or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes as counted were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have any questions that I cannot answer now, I will commit to getting you the answer in writing from the United Sovereign Americans Executive Team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you, as our representatives, make it clear that this must be taken seriously.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. George? George? Could you please fill out a blue card for me so I can, we can reach you? They'll give you a blue card over here to fill out your contact info.
Tonight, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. We will read the resolution and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election Whereas It Is Recognized Civil Right in the United States for Every Citizen to Have Free and Fair Elections Quote: "And the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by woeily prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise." End quote, U.S. Supreme Court Reynolds versus Sims, 1964. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Nancy and in continuation, whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law." End quote, U.S. Supreme Court in Ray Coy, 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act, 2002. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Whereas an open-source audit of the California 2022 general election conducted by California citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies and appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations are in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable citizens' errors for the 2022 general election in California was 90. Certification is designed by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
Go ahead.
Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually, certification can be lawfully, before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud avenido. United States v. Thorckmarken, 1878. Quote, "From the time immemorial, an election to the public, an election to public office has been in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates." End quote, United States Supreme Court, United States v. Classic, 1941.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Whereas, the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place.
Number three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote, count to final canvas, including audibility and witness transfer with paper records.
Thank you.
A NIST complaint randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, bonded, security, forensics, or financial auditors. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real, physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for these candidates affected unless the issues can be probably corrected by a manual hand recount and full review of records.
Thank you.
Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved, we the people stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the city of Huntington Beach, the Orange County Board of Supervisors, the California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and County of Registers to cooperate and fulfill these requests. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored.
The bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vital, important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think these anomalies within our election system, a system which is a part of our national security, infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and young people, and how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in California, as well as in other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That is unite, U-N-I-T-E, the number four, freedom.com. I urge you to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn. I've been a resident of Orange County for more than 70 years. What you heard tonight is a culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly-qualified and credentialed volunteer database teams, database teams from California and across the country. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in California, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this wasn't the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty.
Good evening, council. In continuation and wrapping things up here, at the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizens' audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives and legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. That right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters alike. You, on this board, tonight, have a chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens you represent that you value. It is also by passing the resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. We appreciate your time and attention. God bless this board. God bless America and keep everybody safe on this great patriotic holiday coming up. I'll be handing these out, one to each of you city council members, as well as one to the city clerk for your review and ask any questions later or so forth if you have them. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Adam Wood with the Building Industry Association and 40-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach. Thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm here to ask for, at a, geez, the very minimum, a study session on the proposed charter amendment. From everything we've heard already said tonight, I think there is some wildly inaccurate information being shared. If nothing else, this seems to be predicated on some regrettably terrible advice. I don't know how else to put it. The way this whole thing works is if you have it go to a citywide vote, the city then votes it down, that doesn't stop those homes from ever being proposed or brought forward. All that does is it triggers, it enables, it empowers builder-remedy approach, which appears to be, if I'm reading the room, what everyone's the most concerned about. Through a properly-vetted and approved planning document by city staff, you can control where housing and new development is targeted. By putting in a process that takes that power away and makes, again, it's an abdication of the city council's responsibility to do the hard work and research required of a properly-vetted housing element. By taking that away and forcing, you know, the citywide vote, it's going to fail, we've seen it, it's happening right now in Yorba Linda. They're struggling with this process mightily. They're going to get stuck in a situation where, again, builders' remedy is real. Look at the legislation out there. AB 1893 is a perfect example of how they've tightened this up, and it's going to be coming to our towns. There's a much better way we can do this. This isn't going to accomplish the goals that have been stated. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Perry Clitheroe. I'm going to follow up on what he said a little bit and speak tonight in opposition to Agenda Item 13, the new proposed charter amendment. I think as city councilors, probably a little silly, but I always think of Manuel Kant when I go to the voting booth. I always try to consider if every city passed a similar law, what would the effect be? That's one of Kant's little tests of wisdom that he proposes that I think is good advice. So how does that test relate to housing? Imagine if every city across the entire Western United States had complicated, burdensome zoning codes which made it difficult to build housing as demographic shifts occurred, as they always do. There would become a huge shortage of housing. In fact, that's exactly what's happened over the last 27 years, since 1997, when real housing prices began going up after a very long history in this country of remaining relatively stable. It began largely in San Francisco, just because of the sheer wealth that they accumulated during the tech boom, and incumbent residents grew up and found themselves unable to find housing. They were forced to leave. Seniors who needed to leave their single-family homes because they weren't able to take care of themselves as well, they looked to move and they found nowhere to go because they were being outbid by the tech bros. This crisis has spread and spread and spread. It has rippled and rippled and rippled, and there is no housing anywhere, not here, not in Orange County, not in LA, not in California, not in any of the Western United States. It's a huge economic problem. It is going to cause huge financing problems for us as a city, and the state's rent-a-solution is a perfectly reasonable attempt to manage that dilemma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, I also am in favor of the city adopting the housing element. I have, I read the, kind of the entire proposal. I saw nothing in there about high-density housing threatening us. In fact, what it talks, what it gives us is it gives us numbers. So it says that, that the, there's a moderate affordable housing group and an above-moderate housing affordable, above-moderate income group. And the largest group that is proposed for this housing is the above-moderate people who could... who have the income and can afford the moderate and above-moderate. That's 7,523. And the low income and the very low income are, in the housing plan, afforded 5,845 units. As I said, I saw nothing in there about high-density housing. And I so recommend this because people who work in Huntington Beach cannot afford to live there, here. And I'm talking about possibly public safety, all public safety, police, fire, and how about all the people who, at the restaurants who provide our food, the people who work at the hotels, the service people that we all employ. They can't afford to live in the city. They have to commute, some of them from the high desert even, to get to us to fix things and take care of problems. So I totally hope that you will consider the housing element and work with the state to bring us housing that, you know, that we can, we can deal with. It's not high-density. We have a lot of land that, you know, I could show you a lot of land that isn't. We do have a lot of land. And again, this will bring money into the city for our businesses, for our restaurants, for our car dealers. I mean, it'll really help everybody in the city if we increase the housing because they will provide the payment. And there's two sources of revenue.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Brian Veah. I'm a resident here, and I am, I'm just here to say thank you to the city. We are going in the right directions. There's a lot of things that are going on nationally that affect our city, and I feel like our city's at the tip of the spear. We, we're doing things here that are getting noticed, and a lot of people think that, you know, we here locally can't affect the culture or affect things that are going on nationally. And we absolutely do. There's many things that are going to be happening. When people figure out what's just happened recently with these court decisions and the government overreach, that's going to, that's going to change, we're all going to be amazed. I think a lot of people are going to be ticked off at the same time. But when, when they find out, there's going to be a lot of, again, there's going to be a lot to be said. I am excited for what's happening, and many of you here can read opinions, especially Supreme Court decisions, and as we see the chips fall, they're going to affect us here locally. I'm all about less government. Less government is much, much better. So even, and we do that, I believe we do that through Making America Great Again, and that's the direction we go to get less government. I'm all about that. So again, thank you to the politicians here that we've elected to represent us and put us in the direction that we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, guys, for, for all the stuff that you do and all the work you do and some of the things that you do that is really, really good and some of the other stuff is really questionable, but thank you. The, and I don't even know what you are. Eric, I have no idea. Are you the interim city manager or the chief of police? Or, I have no idea. But hey, I want to say, you know, when we vote, one of the things, the most important things that we have to vote for is, and really pay attention to, is the judges. The judges, you have to know who the judges are, and we really should have, like, town hall meetings or at least a debate or something so that way the judges are accountable to us whenever they make decisions. Just like, I mean, it's really important because they're the ones who affect our children and our children's children, and it really affects them. Anytime that a cop says, hey, let me see your driver's license, and then just to check out, you know, if you're, if you don't have any warrants or anything, it goes on a record. It goes on a record every time that they do that. And then if you show up for, like, four times, it doesn't matter how long, then you're a person of interest because why are the cops asking for them so many times? So it really, they have to have probable cause, and you have to tell them, no, 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 because it messes up your, it messes up your, you'll never get a job. Folks, your kids will never get a job as a car dealer or a banker because of these things. And it's crazy that we're having these, these rules, and nobody even knows it's, it's affecting us. Please pay attention. The judges, judges now, traffic court and criminal court are together. 18-year-olds are getting $700 tickets, and if they can't pay it, they avoid it, then they have this huge, huge record that they can't take off. Please pay attention, and we have to have ordinance, we have to say, hey, judges, you have to be accountable for the decisions, and they have to answer to us. God knows we have enough cops to protect them if they ever show up to one of the meetings, but they should show up at least quarterly or something to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Pablo Aspas, and I'm a resident in Huntington Beach, and I would like to oppose to the item number 13. A few weeks ago, we were here talking about the proposal for the library and putting the ballot. However, the four of you said no because of the cost. Mr. McKeon, that is not here now, said exactly, if you put all those decisions to a vote of the people, why even to have a city council? Now, a few weeks later, we are here, and now there is an amendment in the, a proposal for the amendment, the charter. So it is incredible that the four of you can defend one thing and the opposite at the same time. So you say no vote, but now we want the voters, the residents, to vote. So really, you follow Groucho Marx, who say, those are my principles. If you don't like them, well, I have others. This is what you are following. This subject that is really difficult. It's extremely difficult, and you know it. You have time, you have time to study about everything. This is very technical. You talk, you can talk with professionals, with experts. And now, at the end, you want to put a question that you know how to manage the question to, for people to vote yes or no. Now, if you are brave, don't be behind of the people. Say, we want this, or we don't want that, but don't be behind of the people with excuses. Stop fighting with the state, you know? We have to follow the rules for the state and they follow the rules for the, for the central government, the federal government. That's it. So stop your civil war. They are, in the end, we are going to pay money for years.
Thank you.
Since there were many speakers that came up without announcing their names, I'd just like to invite anybody left that I did not call, because I think it may be one person. So if you were not called, please come down and approach the podium to make your comment.
Okay, you guys have seen before, Chris Waring. I live in Surf City Beach Cottages. Have another problem here. Just got a rent increase of 10.5, 10.7%. And the four of you, the four are getting kudos, you know, I'm a Trump guy too. But you guys got donations from this old boy, Mr., you know, Saunders, Mr. Saunders and Star Management. So anyway, I've been associated with Huntington Beach for almost 70 years. I lived here for 20, but I lived other places. But my parents have had a trailer move home in there for about 60 years. Okay, and I'm a senior citizen, I'm 76 years old. But the deal is here. I remember Huntington Beach when we had two pools down here with those hotels, not hotels, but the apartments, I'll just say, I talked too fast. When we had a tram, when we had a train running through here. We had arcades down here at the pier. That's when Huntington was great. It was great. Now it's just a collage of people in Surf City, USA. However, the way that's turned off is the money, the money. Anyway, getting back to the money, because that's something to talk about. For two years, last two years, I had a $157 rent increase, about 7.5%. I get a rent increase this month, which will be effective in October, of $257. That's an increase of 64%, just from last year's increase. Okay? By the way, I have four jobs. I'm retired. I retired 12 years ago. I taught in the university, a lot of other jobs, but I got to keep working. Fortunately, God has allowed me to stay in shape, reasonably shaped. Anyway, so I just come, some other things. Now, here's a situation. I got another person who didn't sign a lease. They have a lease there now, and he paid 18% increase. I paid 64. So I live 100 yards deeper toward the beach. I got to pay 3.5x, 357 more rent increase than he does.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay. Is that left? No more? Thank you. City Council appointment announcement. Does any council member have any committee appointments to announce? Okay, AB 1234 reporting. Does anyone have anything to report? Openness in negotiations. Does anyone have anything to disclose? City managers report. Please proceed with your report.
Yes, Fire Department has two, two items.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, I am pleased to announce that the Fire Department, again, was awarded the Public Safety Classification, PPC, Class 1 rating by the Insurance Safety Office, a rating we've had since 2004. The ISO, when they do the rating, they conduct a field study across four areas using the fire suppression rating schedule. What's interesting about this rating schedule is it doesn't just look at Fire Department operations and infrastructure. It looks at a gamut of city services offered by multiple departments. It looks at our emergency communication system, both the Police Department and Fire Department dispatch centers. It looks at Fire Department personnel, staffing, capabilities, training, and equipment. It looks at our Class 1 water system managed by our Public Works Division, as well as our community risk reduction and fire prevention activities. At the conclusion of the survey, the ISO assigns a rating scale of 1 to 10, with the Class 1 rating representing exemplary fire protection in the community. ISO evaluates a community approximately every five to 10 years. The interesting fact, and something that we're very proud of, of the 38,000 ISO-rated fire departments in the U.S., only 503 are rated Class 1, and in California, we're among one of 44 departments that are rated Class 1.
Next one.
Thank you. Like I said before, we originally received the first Class 1 rating in 2004. So what does this mean? The public protection classification information plays an important part in the decisions insurers make when affecting the underwriting and pricing of property insurances. The PPC may affect the underwriting and pricing for personal and commercial insurance coverages. And assuming all factors are equal, the price of the property insurance in a community with a good PPC is lower than in a community with a poor PPC. In conclusion, we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our city council for their continued support of the Fire Department, public safety, and our city infrastructure, which has allowed us, again, to receive this Class 1 rating. Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to say, good job. That's awesome.
Thank you.
2004, you said? Was the first time?
2004. Was our first time.
Well, you guys are rocking it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Ortiz.
So, good evening, Ms. Mayor and City Council members. With Independence Day only two days away, we have developed a short fireworks safety presentation. So the city has approved the operation of 16 firework booths that have been distributed across various locations. All proceeds generated from these booths will be directly reinvested into local nonprofit organizations within the city. Fireworks have been delivered this past weekend, and sales were allowed to begin on July 1st and will be permitted to be sold through July 4th until 9:00 p.m. Only safe and sane fireworks are sold through these booths. This means that no fireworks sold will become airborne or explode. Fireworks are only allowed to be discharged on July 4th from noon until 10:00 p.m. All booth owners have been required to attend a fire and police department safety meeting. They are all required to have a 24-hour security detail, and they all receive daily fire department inspections. Some fireworks safety tips that we would like to share are to never allow young children to play with or ignite fireworks. For the smaller children, we suggest residents consider alternatives such as glow sticks, silly strings, streamers, and confetti. We ask only ignite fireworks one at a time. Never place any body part directly over a firework device and maintain a safe distance after fireworks are ignited. Never try to relight or pick up fireworks that have not been fully discharged, as these can go off while attempting to relight, causing serious injury. And never use fireworks while impaired by alcohol or drugs. The city and Fire Department have been actively posting these and more tips on our social media So the use of fireworks are prohibited in some of these following areas. So the beaches, the wetland areas, and the parks, public parks, anything on the ocean side of PCH, fireworks are also prohibited. Public properties such as highways and public facilities, although residential streets are permitted, and commercial and industrial areas as well, and within 100 feet of gas stations or within 300 feet of a fireworks stand for obvious reasons. So many 911 calls for fires in Huntington Beach on July 4th are a result of improper disposal of spent fireworks into trash cans. So the Fire Department recommends keeping a bucket of water or water hose nearby to ensure hot or smoldering fireworks are submerged before disposing. Preventing these trash fires can be done by soaking all fireworks prior to throwing them into the trash. Once properly soaked, these can now simply be placed in your regular household garbage. So as was mentioned earlier, illegal fireworks are those that explode or fly airborne. So citizens are not asked, are asked not to use the 911 system to report these illegal fireworks, as this line is for emergencies only. The HBPD has provided a firework hotline which can be reached at 714-536-5683. And another way to report illegal fireworks is by using the MyHB app. There you will easily navigate to the link that says, "Report Illegal Fireworks." And with that, we want to wish everyone a safe and happy Independence Day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, moving on to consent items. Would any council member like to pull any items?
Pull nine and 10.
Do I have a motion?
I would like to move the remainder of the consent.
One second.
Councilmember Kelmick, did you second that motion? Okay, so we're voting on consent items six, seven, eight, and 11 and 12, correct? All right, we'll start voting. Councilmember Mosher.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Kelmick.
Aye.
Okay, those items pass 7-0.
Councilmember Kelmick.
I'm going to be abstaining from item number nine, just for the reasons that I stated at the last meeting.
I'll move item number nine.
Second.
Motion by Strickland, second by Burns. Councilmember Mosher.
Abstain.
Bolton.
Abstain.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Kelmick.
Abstain.
All right, the item passes 4-03 with Mosher, Bolton, and Kelmick abstaining.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelmick, number 10.
Thank you. I think as with a lot of these, there's some discrepancy, I think, between some of us agree or disagree on some of these, and some of these, I think, are either maybe a little too early, still in the process. But I was hoping that we could take each one of these one by one, just to be able to go through them that way, so.
I think we should take them one by one.
Yeah, so I don't know if you.
Okay. Let's start with AB 2485.
Right. Would you mind going in alphabetical order on the?
Let's just go by the.
Okay, eight. Dixon's Resolution, 182.
If I might, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If, if, I would recommend that Shannon, who's our person on staff, who's in these meetings, just give a brief sentence, not more, unless there's further discussion, and then we'll go from there.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'll start with.
Microphone, please.
Oh, am I on? Item A, which is Assembly Concurrent Resolution 182 authored by Assembly Member Diane Dixon for the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. This would be a resolution to promote and encourage. This would be a resolution to promote and encourage the... Recognizing the need to take action to reduce Pacific Garbage Patch in the middle of the Pacific Ocean. It's also known as the Pacific Trash Vortex, with a mass of approximately 100,000 tons, covering 617,000 square miles, which is twice the size of Texas.
I'd like to move that item.
One second, Fab. I used to work for a nonprofit that actually discovered the Great Pacific Geyser about 30 or 40 years ago. It's pretty egregious, and I appreciate Assembly Member Dixon bringing this forward.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, item B.
Do you want to go ahead and take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, we have item B, which is authored by California Senator Alex Padilla. It is S 3830. It is to authorize the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program. This is a federal bill. The LEWAP was established by Congress in December 2020, and it ultimately expired in May 2024. We did have some residents and businesses in the city of Huntington Beach that were able to take advantage of the LEWAP. And Senator Padilla has authored this bill 3830 to reopen that program.
I move that we support this item. I'm second.
All right. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Item C.
Item C is AB 2485, Regional Housing Need Determination. This bill would assemble and convene advisory panels, but it is unclear how HCD would assemble those panel of experts. And we believe at this time that the composition of the panel is not adequately covered by local and regional appointments. This bill might be intended well, but it doesn't seem like this would be possibly in the best interest of the city.
I move to oppose AB 2485.
Second.
I'd just like to note that as of the, whenever this document that was published in March or May, that there's no opposition to this bill from any organized group. I think that this bill is, gets us more information into the process for how some of this is, the housing information that we're going to be talking about later is determined. I think transparency in that process is good on all levels, so I'll be... I would like us to support the bill, but I will be opposing the opposed motion.
Can I ask a question of Ms. Levin? Shannon? Do you know if there was an attempt to amend the bill to make the composition of the panels more clear?
I can check on that. This bill has been amended a series of times. Most of these bills have been amended to get to this point. To my knowledge, at this point, there isn't an amendment to incorporate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're ready?
Yep.
Councilmember Mosher?
No.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
No.
So the item passes 4-2-1. Councilmember Mosher abstaining. Bolton and Calmick, no.
No.
The other way around.
The other way around.
Yeah, I abstain.
I'm sorry. It's okay.
Bolton abstained.
Sorry.
Okay, item D.
Item D is AB 2553, Freedman, Housing Development, Major Transit Stops, Vehicular Impact. This would potentially alter the definition of a major transit stop. And major transit thoroughfares like Beach Boulevard are part of the basis for RENA calculations.
I move that we oppose.
I second.
Okay, let's vote. Councilmember Mosher?
Abstain.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick? All right, so the item passes 4-0-3. Mosher, Bolton, and Calmick abstain.
Okay. Item E, AB 2597.
AB 2597 by Assembly Member Ward, Planning and Zoning Revision of Housing Element, Regional Housing Need Allocation Appeals, Southern California Association of Government. This bill would reduce the appeal time from 45 days to 30 days.
I move that we oppose the bill. Second.
All right. Councilmember Mosher?
Abstain.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Abstain.
Passes 4-0-3. Mosher, Bolton, Calmick abstaining.
Thank you. F, AB 3093.
AB 3093, Housing Element, Streamlined Multifamily Housing. This would require cities to plan and implement and fund shelters. It inserts conditions into the law, and IRC voted to oppose.
I move that we oppose AB 3093. Second.
So I have a question. So does the bill actually direct cities to build the shelters? Or is it just saying to zone for shelters?
What the bill does is it adds two new income categories to RENA. Extremely low income, which right now is part of the very low income category. Separates it out, and then it adds acutely low income, which acutely low income is usually only going to be your homeless population. So it adds those two, and then what that would do is result in a higher percentage of your RENA in the lower income category. Right now, our lower income category RENA is about 44% of our total RENA. So it's probably likely that our RENA, lower income RENA would make up over 50% of our total RENA. In addition, the bill, which is sponsored by the governor, pushes the accountability of accommodating, zoning for, planning for, and providing, which means producing, housing for acutely low income, which is generally a navigation center or shelter, puts the burden on cities, the jurisdictions within the COGS. The other part of the bill places the control over how the program would be implemented, which I guess is part of the ambiguity. It places part of how this bill would be implemented in the hands of HCD. It allows them to come up with the programs and the guidelines. So it essentially lets HCD determine how cities would comply with this bill and with the requirements of the acute new two income categories.
With the record of HCD, I move that we oppose this AB 3093. Second.
Okay, ready? Councilmember Mosher?
Abstain.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Abstain.
Passes 4-0-3. Mosher, Bolton, Calmick abstain.
I'd actually like to pull SB 7 and bring it back to IRC at a later time since it's been significantly amended.
Second.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
We'll table it.
Okay.
I'll just table it.
Okay. H, AB 2574.
AB 2574 authored by Valencia, Alcoholism or Drug Abuse Recovery or Treatment Programs and Facilities Disclosures. So this bill would require that entities disclose if they own or control or have a financial interest in a recovery residence, any contractual residence with an entity. And it'd also require that a general partner, director, or officer of the licensee make those disclosures.
I move that we support AB 2574.
Second.
I would like to note that the League of Cities, who we've left, is the sponsor of this bill.
Great.
It's good they get it right once.
All right, ready?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Okay, moving on to council member items. Number 13. Councilmember McKeon, why don't you go ahead and introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the genesis of this item actually began last year when we were discussing the zoning for the state mandated 13,368 housing units. And then as part of that, we as council members were being forced to sign a statement of overriding consideration, which said that we feel these 13,368 housing units were more important than the significant and unavoidable, and in some cases, permanent, negative impacts to the environment. And that really affected me to my core. I also know it affected the mayor and the mayor pro tem, because we just couldn't understand why we would be forced to make that statement when we fundamentally didn't agree with, you know, significantly affecting our environment in that way. And I don't think anyone up here from their previous council walked the community through what those 13,368 units would permanently do to our environment. See, because of those 13,368 units, 8,000 and change need to be one of the three affordable housing classifications. And at a 20% inclusionary rate, which means every project needs to have 20% of the units be affordable, that means if you took those 8100 units, divided it by 20%, you would have to build 41,000 units, because in no way will a project ever be 100% affordable, as it won't pencil financially unless subsidized. And so we currently have roughly 81,000 housing units in our city. And so that means we would need to zone for and increase our housing supply by 50%, which will permanently and negatively impact our environment like never before. And those impacts would be air quality, noise, infrastructure, traffic, circulation, utilities, our finite amount of water, and not to mention our public safety resources. And this is a massive, permanent change to our environmental landscape. And that decision, we feel, to permanently and negatively impact our environment is too important to be left up to a majority of four council members and should be left up to the voters to decide. And there is precedence for this, as many cities in California have adopted voter approval requirements for zoning or general plan changes. And we should all be environmentalists, in my opinion, when it comes to protecting Huntington Beach. We have been entrusted with this, and it is our duty to protect Huntington Beach's precious resources and precious environment. The state always uses the rationale that it's a matter of statewide concern when they can subvert a city's local control. And the California Legislature has declared that the protection of the environment is in fact a matter of statewide concern. And this proposed agenda does just that, and is akin to our Measure C, but without ambiguity and gray area. This agenda item and proposed charter amendment is actually very tight, in that in order for it to be applied, it has to hit three very high levels of a threshold. The first threshold it has to hit is that this has to be a city-initiated general plan update or zoning change. So very importantly, this will not affect any private sector projects that pursue a zone change or general plan update. It has to be city-initiated. Two, there has to be an accompanying environmental impact report, or an EIR. And three, that EIR has to find that this proposed general plan update or zoning change presents significant and unavoidable negative impacts to the environment. If all three of those high thresholds are hit, then that city-initiated general plan update or zone change will have to go to a vote of the people. I understand that I campaigned against the previous council's charter amendments, but I feel the proposed charter, this proposed charter amendment is necessary now so that we can follow the recent Senate Bill 9 ruling that said that the ability to subdivide a single-family lot to allow four total units is unconstitutional as it pertains specifically to charter cities like Huntington Beach. So with that, on behalf of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and myself, I would like to make a motion that we, the city, place on the November 2024 ballot a proposed charter amendment stating that, quote, "No city-initiated general plan amendment or zoning change may be approved by the city where the related environmental review, EIR, finds the same proposed general plan update or zoning change presents significant and unavoidable negative impacts to the environment without first receiving approval by a vote of the people." This proposed charter amendment should also include language to the effect of, quote, "City planning and zoning is a local municipal affair beyond the reach of state control or interference, and city planning and zoning is a local activity reserved for the city and its people and not the state." And I would like to direct staff to please bring back a proposed November 2024 ballot initiative within 30 days for city council approval. Thank you.
I second your motion. Does anybody have? Councilmember Calmick?
Excuse me. All right. Buckle up. Tonight, I'm going to talk, I'm not going to talk about housing. I'll let others do that tonight, and some have. Tonight, I want to talk about process. This item seems to be about housing, but it's not. It's about council absconding its policymaking authority to the voters. This is called policymaking by ballot box. I've included a white paper that was mentioned during public comments from SPUR, which is a very nonprofit planning organization. I find it interesting that the speaker attacked the organization and the publishers of the document, but didn't mention any of the content in the report, which speaks to a lot of what happens and the unintended consequences of planning by ballot box. You wouldn't say that you're not going to follow any of the advice in the New England Journal of Medicine because it's from New England. It doesn't make any sense. There's not a single city council I could find that has placed such an overly broad and undercooked charter amendment on their ballot or voter initiative if they're not a charter city. Initiatives like this are brought by voters requiring signatures to be collected. To shunt the policymaking process, the general plan is nothing more than a policy document. To the voters is dereliction of duty. In reference to the charter amendment I brought back forward in May and the current signature gathering campaign to overturn the book banning committee and to require a vote to outsource, if libraries are proposed to be outsourced for management functions, the mayor stated during the meeting, that meeting in May, "When you take those powers from us and bring those issues to the voters, there really is no point of us being here." And when Councilmember Keon stated at the same meeting, "If you put all those decisions to a vote of the people, why even have a city council?" So what's changed? I'll tell you what's changed. Nothing. This is politics at its worst. I brought forward those charter amendments because it was simple. Does your library work for you, or are you happy with its management? They're also likely didn't run afoul of state law on purpose. You don't need to delve into anything complicated or have understanding of CEQA or land use. Just, does your library work? This item asks voters to weigh the economic benefits of a general plan amendment or zoning text amendment. What are those? Against the environmental impact report. What's that? As proffered by the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, disclosed in that document against a complicated set of criteria that reach a level of significant and unavoidable impacts. Sure. Do you see where I'm going and how we're going to run into a problem here? This council majority is trying to put something unpopular on the ballot to try to jam up council members Bolton, Mosher, and I when we're running for reelection. This is horrible politics. Try to make us look, make a bad vote so folks can say again, like they did during the recall, that we want to build six-story buildings next to single-family homes, which is not true. This is not environmental stewardship. If it was, the environmental board would still be here. Our sustainability master plan would have been completed. We'd have a climate action plan passed. We'd have a mobility master plan. And every time we talk about active transportation, bike lanes and walking paths, it wouldn't be dismissed. This is peak garbage politics. This is what's been the Motive Saberandi for this council majority, bringing an idea with no policy thought on how it will impact the community and what those, when those impacts are pointed out, will be ignored, and this will be pushed ahead. And who cares about the unintended consequences? We should have, we should do an EIR on this council and make a finding that it's had sustainable, yet avoidable impacts on the community. The narrative associated with this item is a rehash the lawsuit we lost in San Diego several weeks ago. In fact, the actual exhibits used are from that lawsuit instead of including clean copies of the documents provided. What makes me wonder is who's actually leading this item? But let's talk about the narrative. A judge didn't believe it, nor do I. Ms. Biesinger, I have a question here. The narrative for this item states that the housing element requires us to zone for 13,368 units. Roughly 5,000 of those are market rate units. So we get this 41,000 unit number. The housing element in the environmental document contemplates something in the 20,000 range, correct? Does it count for the buffer to get above 13,000 units?
The housing element capacities are around 19,000, 20,000. The EIR evaluated less because it considered also the general plan buildout. So 20,000 less, whatever general plan buildout is.
Right. So I think as Councilmember McKeon stated, this 41,000 number appears to be just taking the inverse of 20%, which is five, and multiplying that times the RENA allocation. But the EIR doesn't scope to analyze 41,000 units. It analyzes less than 20,000 units. So there's no way that 41,000 units could be built because they weren't analyzed in the environmental document. So this is just a large number to scare folks to say that you're going to double the number of units in the city. We couldn't do it because they weren't environmentally cleared. Speaking of environmental documents, as I stated earlier, this would ask voters to weigh the economic benefits of a general plan or zoning text amendment initiated by the city against the California Environmental Quality Act's rubric of potential environmental impacts. That rubric changes and has changed dramatically in the last five years. If we added this language that would require a vote to the people for all significant and unavoidable impacts without any... and unavoidable impacts without any sort of savings clause, which I don't hear discussed at all, we set ourselves up for disaster. We effectively are setting in stone our position while SEQA changes around us. Five years ago, we used Level of Service, or LOS, instead of Vehicle of Mild Travel, BMT, to calculate traffic impacts. Tribal and cultural resources were analyzed differently. This is folly. But I want to address the actual environmental documents themselves. We're elected to do highly technical work with a planning and executive staff behind us to help us make the best decisions we can. That includes reading this document. That's the EIR for the general plan amendment that we did back in 2017. This is the EIR for the Beach Edge corridor specific plan, but it's missing the, another volume like the five-inch D-ring binder here for the exhibits. This is a document you're going to ask voters to read in order to make an informed decision? I've read all of these. I served on Planning Commission for eight years before getting elected to city council. This council has not certified a single environmental document since it got here. How can you ask voters to do something you're not willing to do yourselves? I've made a recommendation to certify or certified at least a dozen of these, and folks, this stuff is complicated. It's boring and it's a slog. You cannot ask voters to do that. This is literally why they elected us. You don't go to a heart surgeon to fix a blocked artery and ask him to pull the waiting room to see if you should put a stent in or do open-heart surgery. You rely on the heart surgeon's expertise and that of his support staff in the operating room. SEQA is really complicated and it has nothing to do with if you're smart enough to figure it out. It has to do with the time and learned skillset to evaluate what the hell it's trying to tell you. I can't ask our voters to do this under current framework presented tonight. I don't have enough information about what that would entail. Back to the item narrative. There's also this discussion about the Redondo Beach SB 9 ruling. It states that SB 9 is unconstitutional, is applied to charter cities, and my understanding that the ruling at this point only litigated, only was addressed to the five cities that litigated that case. It doesn't apply to all charter cities yet. Furthermore, Ms. Viesenior, how many SB 9 applications have we had?
We haven't had any.
Okay. Second, this item's narrative states that California law has recognized that a charter city's planning and zoning of its land and its local municipal affair beyond the reach of state interference and control, and the Redondo Beach decision reaffirms that. The state passed SB 1333 back in 2017, 2018, which included language that ensuring the location development approval and access to housing from all income levels in jurisdictions in California is a matter of statewide concern and not exclusively municipal affair as the term is used in Section 5, Article 11 of the California Constitution. And that's why we had to pay the Kennedy Commission $4.5 million for the last time we tussled with the state on housing in 2018. Furthermore, the actual language of the Redondo Beach decision states, quote, "As discussed below, this is not a case about whether our state legislature may enact legislation to ensure access to affordable housing or whether it may act to address the different concern of statewide shortage in housing more generally. The courts of the state of California have held that both to be valid statewide concerns for which our legislature possesses authority to address. However, because the provisions of SB 9 are not reasonably related and sufficiently narrowly tailored to the explicit stated purpose of that legislation, namely to ensure access to affordable housing, SB 9 cannot stand and there is granted." I'm exhausted with the misrepresentation that continues to be argued in these chambers with regard to process and what actually occurs in lawsuits. Back to process. I think there are dozens of unknowns and unknowables that haven't been explored with this item. This item will cause our city to rot. It will not allow us to be nimble and deal with the pressing needs of the community without spending more money and time to burden our voters with the jobs that we're supposed to do. It's very likely that the state will statutorily exempt the housing elements and their respective zonings from SEQA, which would moot this entire process. Don't think it won't happen? Remember SB 1333 I just spoke about earlier? It was specifically adopted because Huntington Beach created a loophole with regard to specific plans and general plan inconsistencies with regard to charter cities, a loophole closed by SB 1333. There are currently two bills working their way through the legislature that address specifically and in their legislative analysis Huntington Beach, AB 1825, California Freedom to Read Act, and SB 1174, Elections and Voter Identification. So then this leaves us with a charter amendment to do what? Stop any amendment to the downtown specific plan from being amended to create a better and more cohesive downtown without a vote? Councilmember McKean and this council majority voted to repeal the EIR for the Beach Edge corridor specific plan. We learned at a meeting a few months ago that this was indeed not possible without likely rezoning the entire corridor and would require another EIR. That would, under this scheme, require a vote of the people to return the corridor back to commercial zoning and make dozens of properties non-conforming. Thankfully, that exercise was abandoned. But if the auto dealers who sent a letter in today with concern, and the auto dealers generate 15% of our sales tax, and the hotels come to the city at some time in the future, like they did in the early 2000s, and said, "Ask for help because market conditions have changed," we can say, "Sure, but we're going to need to call a million-dollar special election or wait a year or two for the next election. Do you want a low-turnout election or a high-turnout election? Or you're on your own to apply for a zoning text amendment." That's not business-friendly. This charter amendment will have a wholesale effect on all land in Huntington Beach, commercial and industrial areas that would need to be changed to better meet market needs or require a lengthy and costly process. This is exactly the opposite of cutting red tape. This creates more government process that costs even more time and money. We're also going to be hampered when it comes to complying with changes in state law when it applies to other parts of our general plan. You all know that there's more than just the housing element is part of the general plan. There's the circulation element, the environmental resource and conservation element, the natural and environmental hazards element, noise, public services and infrastructure element, historic and cultural resources, and coastal element. While I confirm with staff that luckily the coastal element doesn't require an environmental document to update or pass, the general plan update we completed in 2017, which I showed you earlier, most definitely will have to be required a vote to pass. I served on the committee as a member of the public in the Planning Commission when we did that. It took us four or five years to complete that, and when we're going to ask, and then we're going to go ahead and ask voters to work, to review that of a 10,000-page document, it doesn't make any sense. It's what we're here to do. This brings us to what we're actually asking residents to analyze in weighing their economic benefits versus the environmental impacts according to SEQA criteria. Environmental impact sounds scary. I think we all imagine oiled birds and smokestacks polluting. But SEQA has expanded to become very broad, to include view shed corridors, tribal consultations, bisecting existing communities, short-term noise, air quality issues, and greenhouse gas emissions. This is all to say that any plan that contemplates any sort of moderate development will likely have significant and unavoidable impacts as it relates to the SEQA rubric. GHG's greenhouse gases are usually the hardest to overcome and even more so than as of yesterday when Huntington Beach left the Orange County Power Authority. With regard to the statement of overriding considerations, the example provided in the attachments, these are all estimates based on cumulative long-term and short-term effects. Air quality, for example, the reason we have an SOC required is that PM25 dust from construction sites and diesel exhaust from heavy equipment will likely put us above an artificial threshold, an objective threshold, but an artificial threshold that would require us to sign a statement of overriding consideration. Greenhouse gas emissions are the same. Hydrology, water quality, utilities, and service systems, this is usually, this is actually a misleading item here because the review in the actual report and its appendices, what it actually says is the urban water management plan doesn't account for the level of development, so it doesn't contemplate, and therefore it's deficient. So when we update the next urban water management plan, which will identify sources of water, groundwater, and imported water, that will check and account for all the housing elements as we go through it. So it doesn't mean we don't have enough water. It just means that the plan, another large document, doesn't contemplate the zoning changes we're making. Noise, construction noise will likely always go above our local noise standards, and traffic noise was already identified in the general plan we passed in 2017. These thresholds are set on background ambient levels, and on certain roads already in the city, we go above those noise levels at background. We have a lot of cars driving through our city. So as you can see, the statement of overriding consideration requires careful review of these documents, which is both time-consuming, and if you aren't familiar with their structure and rubric, can be confusing. I had a resident ask if I thought they weren't smart enough to actually do this, and I responded that it wasn't about being smart, it was about having time. And she responded that we can just have someone summarize them for us and then make a decision. It's like, well, that's why you vote for us. That's what we're here to do. We are here to be your elected representatives, to read these documents and ask staff all the hard questions and come to a conclusion. In conclusion, I think that it's clear this item thinks it's meant to assert our local control over our general plan and zoning, but it appears to do just the opposite. We need to pass a housing element. Yorba Linda is struggling with an issue similar to ours and in trying to pass a compliant housing element, but their voices, their voters enabled their green light initiative back in 2006. So they have to ask their voters again to approve the zoning for their housing element. They tried in 2022 and failed with 75% of their residents opposing. And on June 18th, the city passed their next try at an amended housing element, and now they have to go to the voters. They're calling their measure they're placing on the ballot a local control measure. Well, I don't have to explain it. I'll let their council member explain it. She does an excellent job explaining the importance of retaining local control by making sure you pass your housing element.
Is that going to be the impetus for the government to all of a sudden say, "Oh, no, we're nailing everybody right away"? Or is this something where legally they're going to have to wait and see and see how, you know, the state of California voters react?
Thank you. Peggy, did you have a comment?
Why don't I take that? Thank you, Audrey, for those questions. So for many of you who do not attend those meetings, these meetings regularly, I've been very active on Our Neighborhood Voices, which is the statewide ballot initiative that's been mentioned. I am one of the proponents on the ballot for that ballot measures. It's our intent to have it on the ballot for 2026. And the main problem is just getting the word out to get that ballot measure to support it, as well as frankly, it takes about $10 million. Okay? So it's very hard to, I've been trying to raise money for that for, I don't know, four years? That you guys all have to sit through and listen to me talk about it. But most importantly, though, I do want it to say, the one thing that the ballot measure does not do is undo all this law. Okay? So it doesn't do that. What it does do is, is to preserve local planning. So when there is a conflict between the state law and local planning laws, the purpose of the ballot is to say that the local planning laws control. Okay? So it doesn't overturn these laws. It just says that you will have that local control, and it's up to the cities to decide whether they prefer the state housing laws or they want to make their own. Right now, we don't have that choice. If Sacramento said this is the mandate, then, you know, it overturns all our, invalidates all of our local ordinances. The purpose of the local control ballot measure is so that you get to keep your local measures. The second thing about the fines, the minute that I will tell you, if we don't pass in November, you can be assured that the Attorney General's Housing Strike Force, okay, let me stress that, AG Bonta calls it, the Housing Strike Force, will issue that boilerplate complaint. It's, I mean, it's already typed up, and they just insert the city, and it'll be served on here very quickly. Governor Newsom separately, under the Housing Community Development, HCD, also has a team of attorney. While we're in the middle of a budget crisis, that unit received substantial money to ensure they'll continue to do its job of punishing the cities. So they will also be able to file a lawsuit. One of the things that Governor Newsom said back in 2022, when it was created, was we will be watching every city council meeting. I don't know why they would do that, but they are, to ensure that we obey all of these state mandates. So if these $600,000, if you're wondering how fast it'll come, it will come very quickly because both the Housing Strike Force and Governor Newsom's Housing Accountability Unit with all their teams of attorneys and planners are pretty much shielded from the budget. And like I said, you know, last year, I think they got nice beefed up $2.5 million. All you have to do is go to the State Personnel Board, and you'll see that that unit, those two units are hiring. Everybody else has a hiring freeze, but they've got jobs opening. All to say is that is very serious, and if you follow the governor's tweets like I do, you know, he is literally just chomping at the bit, like he wants to sue us. That's your taxpayers' dollars at work. I mean, he wants to do that. All to say is that the importance of passing the elements, the housing element, I get your concern, and Nate, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a lot of your concerns are very project-specific, but we, the city, we don't build. All right? We're just zoning it so that, to follow the state mandate. Whether the property owner will build or not, that's a separate issue. And if they decide to build and we continue to have our local control, then we can start talking about the actual, like, parking, okay? Or how tall the aesthetics, things like that. If this, if this housing element doesn't pass, then what happened is when a project comes before us, we rubber stamp it. We lose all local control. We don't get to talk about parking. We don't get to talk about how tall, we don't get to talk about, you know, noise or anything. That's completely tossed out the door. And so the importance of passing that housing element is we get to keep that control if, and I stress if, somebody decides to build on that piece of property. Did I misspeak at all?
Nope. That was good.
Okay. So right now, think big picture. But project-wise, we'll address those concerns as they come. Then we can negotiate, we can talk to the developers.
So, so thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Wong.
So, thank you, Councilmember Wong. I appreciate the descriptive and thoughtful analysis. I'm glad that in your day job, here in Huntington Beach, as one of our senior deputy city attorneys working for the city, so I appreciate that. And as Councilmember Wong stated, if we pass this, and we know that only in very rare circumstances will incumbent residents vote for new neighbors, like, we know that. Even the idea of zoning for the ability to maybe have new neighbors at some point in the future, if the free market wants to create that, we know that residents are very unlikely to vote for more housing. We've seen it up and down the state. I think Measure K in Costa Mesa is like the first time that's ever happened. But by not passing a housing element, we will not be exercising our local control under state law, and we'll open ourselves to fines and builder's remedy. We had the Building Industry Association rep come today and talk about that, which is where a developer gets to ignore our zoning code and build what they want. Why enable a policy that kneecaps our ability to exercise local control? Government for spite is no way to government, and our city will rot, our tax base will dry up, our schools will continue to close, and no one but Goldman Sachs and sovereign wealth funds from other countries will be able to buy properties here. And finally, if this passes, actually, the other piece is that the timeline to get this on the ballot is likely going to require a special meeting. We are rushing this process as well. This is an aggressive process to put a yet-to-be-written charter amendment on a ballot that I believe the timeline says we got to have this wrapped up by July 19th, July 23rd at the latest, and then folks are going to have 10 days to review the independent analysis. This is rushed. This is not how you do a charter amendment. You do what we, a version of what we did last time to collect input on the need for this. If the state changes this, it will break, if the state basically can just exempt themselves from having to go through the SEQA process, which would moot this charter amendment, the unintended consequences could break the rest of the things we need to do in the city and will hurt our businesses. And finally, if this passes, I'll be absolutely fascinated to sit and watch how the rationale for the statement of overriding consideration for noise and emergency access for the airshows EIR will pass. I remind everyone that we're the applicant on that EIR, and we've budgeted more than half a million dollars, although it's unlikely to circulate for this coming airshow if approved. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of observations first and then a couple of questions. So first, on page one of the memo accompanying the council member item, it says that city planning and zoning is a local municipal affair beyond the reach of state-controlled, beyond the reach of state control or interference. That statement is not completely accurate. It is a fact that the state can and has impacted city planning and zoning through statutes governing housing, including their regional housing needs assessment. That's RENA when we talk about RENA. That's what that stands for. The action by the state to regulate housing and to require cities to do things like adopt housing elements has been upheld by the courts time after time after time. Anderson v. City of San Jose judicial decisions have long recognized the statewide dimension of the affordable housing shortage in relation to various impositions by the state onto the realm of local affairs. Coalition Advocating Legal Housing Options versus City of Santa Monica noted that the legislature and courts legislature and courts have declared housing to be a matter of statewide concern. Reg v. Ellsworth, I'm sorry, Reg and Ellsworth v. City of Berkeley, these are all Court of Appeals decisions. State housing law preempts conflicting charter city ordinances despite the home rule doctrine. And finally, our own case where the Court of Appeals ruled earlier this year against us, which says charter cities are exempt from some requirements of state planning and zoning law, but like all other cities, charter cities must adopt a general plan with the mandatory elements specified by state law, including a housing element. So, because I believe the statement that, on the first page of the memo is factually incorrect, I want to point that out. The memo mentions the Redondo Beach case, and I think Councilmember Cal mentioned that as well. That's the one, the SB 9 case that's been talked about. I'll bet anyone a chicken dinner that case gets reversed on appeal. Anybody, you got any takers? Anybody want a chicken dinner? Okay, you're on. The holding is inconsistent with, you know, tons of other holdings by Courts of Appeal, and I just don't see it. But, well, we've got to bet, right? Okay. Second, the citation to the state constitution in the memo is also misleading. It mentions home rule municipal affairs for the same reasons I just explained. Again, I'm concerned about the inaccuracies in the memo. Okay. Yorba Linda and also Costa Mesa, which Councilmember Cal alluded to, they have tried this approach of putting housing element changes on the ballot. I've heard this referred to as ballot box zoning. That's a little pithy name for it. Those efforts did not yield the desired consequence in either case. So in Yorba Linda, as we just saw, they have a ballot box zoning requirement, and they are now desperately begging the residents to do the opposite, which is to pass the housing element. And their effort, the city council's effort to persuade residents to now pass the housing element, is something that they are characterizing as a local control initiative. And it's just mind-boggling that they would characterize it this way, because the whole point of the ballot box zoning measure was supposedly to maintain local control, you know. All right. So as the councilmember in Yorba Linda said, the stakes are that they face $600,000 a month fines if they don't pass the housing element, and they fully anticipate being sued by the state if they don't pass their housing element. And again, you know, we face the same fate if we put something on the ballot and the voters don't vote for it, and we just paid millions of dollars, as Councilmember Cal Mcsaid, to the Kennedy Commission for having lost a housing suit. And, you know, that's not all that's at stake here. We're talking about risking the complete loss of local control if we go down this route. It is the opposite of what people want. Costa Mesa, they ended up rolling back their ballot box zoning measure just a few years after they passed it because they felt that it stifled not just residential but commercial development, and that's not what they wanted. So, okay, questions? So we already have two examples of situations where ballot box zoning did not give the residents what they wanted. And so the question is, why are we going down that same road? And we know where it leads. And how is this measure different from Yorba Linda or Costa Mesa? Anybody, I mean, if staff has an answer, I'd be happy to hear it.
Can we ask the city attorney on his opinion and on the strength of this charter?
Yeah, sure. So the question, though, is how is it different from Yorba Linda and Costa Mesa?
So I haven't seen Yorba Linda's or Costa Mesa's specifically, although we've looked at other cities voter approval charter amendments. The thing about Yorba Linda that is starkly different than Huntington Beach, and, you know, everything that Ms. Wang in the video said is true for a general law city. General law cities are political subdivisions of the state, and they have no freedom or ability, there's no distance between a general law city and the state control. There's no distance, there's no daylight. A charter city, on the other hand, is different. And charter cities clearly do have the home rule authority. And in fact, if I could reference the SB 9 ruling that Councilmember Calmick was reading, he missed the last sentence, I think, or I didn't hear it. It says, accordingly, the court finds that SB 9 is neither reasonably related to ensuring access to affordable housing nor narrowly tailored to avoid unnecessary interference into local governance. SB 9 is therefore unconstitutional as violative of the home rule doctrine. The difference between general law cities and those cities that invoke the home rule doctrine, and those are only charter cities, is that basically the state legislature can legislate anything they want for a general law city, which is what they did with the RENA laws all these years. And then in 2018, SB 1333, applied all of those RENA laws suddenly to charter cities. Well, that's a misfit, because those are general laws, they are broadly written, and they essentially commandeer local control of general law cities. The difference with a charter city is, if there's a conflict between the home rule authority that the Redondo Beach Court cited for a charter city, if there's competition with state law, all of the cases cited for charter cities say that in order for preemption to occur by the state over a charter city's home rule authority, the state law has to be narrowly tailored and the least intrusive means in order to accomplish the goal. That's why the SB 9 ruling is going to stand on appeal. And that's why Huntington Beach has historically been able to invoke its home rule authority, even if it's contrary to state law. And that's why the RENA laws, if you look at our federal case, that's why the RENA laws ultimately, as applied to charter cities, will fail or should fail, because, as I said, they've been on the books for decades for general law cities. They are not narrowly tailored to accomplish the state's stated goal of advancing affordable housing. A perfect example is the 20% inclusionary rate that was mentioned earlier. How can you take a number like 13,368 units of RENA? And then only about 8,100 of those are really affordable housing. So now we've taken the number and we're actually looking at what advances the affordable housing? Only a percentage of the total number. So that's problem one. Problem two is now developers have to come in and honor a state law of a 20% inclusionary rate, which means they can't really come in and build 100% affordable housing. State law mandates that it's 20%. Why? Because the state wants to make sure developers can afford to build. So the 20% is in place. So if you take the 8,100 divided by the 20%, you do get the 41,000 units. So what the state is basically saying to the city of Huntington Beach is, you have to plan for and ultimately develop 41,000 units of high-density housing in order to accomplish our affordable housing goals. That's not the least intrusive means, that's the most intrusive means, because most of those, the vast majority of those are market rate. So you're building 41,000 units of high-density housing in order to accomplish an 8,100-unit goal for affordable housing. That's why that, those laws, the RENA laws, will fail against charter cities when it's tested in court, and we're just at the beginning of this. The federal case is ongoing. The state case is a different case of a different nature, and we're battling that case. But there is a vast difference between charter cities and even the way the Courts of Appeal treat charter cities, as you pointed out, versus general law cities. Ms. Wang was speaking about general law cities, and there's no question, no doubt, that they are subject to state control.
So, reading the cases, I don't see the difference when we're talking about RENA in the way that this courts have treated general law cities and charter cities?
Most of the courts, most of the court cases you cited are for general law cities.
Well, the one that we just lost is us in a charter city in state court.
You mean the Kennedy?
No, the Court of Appeals decision that we just had, so when the Attorney General sued the city, and then the Court of Appeals directed the trial court to go ahead with the proceedings.
Respectfully, that Court of Appeal issued an alternative writ which is not binding law. It was an advisory to the lower court, and we're still in the middle of that case. We have not lost anything, Councilwoman.
Well, the way that the court has framed the law, as I read it, we're not exempt, the charter city is not exempt.
The court didn't frame the law. It was literally an advisory to the lower court. It did not issue, it did not create law, it did not make a binding ruling.
Well, whether you want to say it was the Court of Appeals, or whether you want to go back to what the trial court said, what they, what they are saying to us is that we're not exempt as a charter city. I'll move on.
That case is long from over.
Because we'll not, we'll not, we won't resolve that tonight. I will move on. So another question is, say we pass this, and we hand the voters a housing element to look at, and the voters reject it, does that make the housing element issue go away? So I'll pose that to the staff. Does the housing element issue go away if the voters reject it?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay. So if the housing issue, the housing element issue doesn't go away as a result of the voters having this ability and following through and rejecting a plan, what are we doing? What are we giving voters? It's an illusion. It's not going to go away. And then, like what they were saying in Yorba Linda, you're talking about fines, and you're talking about the state coming in and taking over your building department, and the city no longer has the ability to stop builders from building whatever they want. Yeah, I just, I mean, the fact that this is being touted as an environmental protection measure, I just, I just don't, I don't buy it. We're not being honest and forthright with the residents. They are being led to believe that this will make RENA go away and that we won't have to comply with it with this ploy, and it's not going to work. Okay. I think, I think that's it. We're going to end up not in a good place, and this is not going to do what the residents want it to do. And I don't think that it is fair or honest to say that to residents, to make them think that by passing this, by having this on the ballot, it always sounds great to put something on the ballot, and I'm not opposed to putting things on the ballot. But in this situation, what's being said is, you put this on the ballot and we won't have any more RENA issues, and that's just not true. So thank you.
Councilmember Strickland?
I would like to ask Jennifer Senor, you know, it's been presented today by Councilwoman McKeon, saying this is a tight language, and I believe Councilwoman Calmick said it's very broad, can't be tight and broad at the same time. So I want to ask you, just based on some of the criteria, first, what's the definition of, hold on, of significant environmental impact? What is the definition based on?
It's based on the CEQA law. So when an impact is found to be exceeding a threshold of significance, so when we evaluate a project's impacts, we look at it compared to what a threshold of significance is. If it exceeds the threshold of significance, it's called potentially significant.
Is there a chart that says at this point?
Yes, there can, yeah, there can be. And if it's considered significant, there's two ways to reduce its significance. One is to mitigate it, the second is to modify your project. When neither of those can occur, and you can't reduce your impact to a level below the threshold of significance, it's considered a significant and unavoidable impact.
And that changes over time as the legislature changes CEQA, right, dramatically?
Yes, so CEQA changes all the time. Things that we didn't evaluate 15 years ago, five years ago, are things that we're evaluating now. Traffic looks different, noise looks different, so it changes.
And then I do want to kind of know, based on what Councilwoman McKeon has written, what we're talking about here, how many, how many projects have we done maybe in the last year or two that fit his definition here in Huntington Beach?
In the last year or two?
Yeah. That our city initiated, significant impact?
Probably none.
Okay.
Yeah, the housing element.
Okay. So we're talking about the housing element here?
I blacked that one out.
All right. We all tried to block that out, actually. I want to ask, it was kind of mentioned about the differences between Yorba Linda, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, Yorba Linda and Huntington Beach, but I do want to ask the city attorney, because you're the one fighting this fight on a lot of it. It's been presented today, this is tight or broad. I assume your office had some kind of duties to kind of help with Councilwoman McKeon. Based on your attorney expertise, is this very tight? Is this broad? Are we, are we putting ourselves in harm's way as a city based on, based on the language of McKeon's proposal?
Yeah, so, so we were consulted, and we gave feedback, and I, you know, based on all of our research and our experience with this, as well as looking at other cities, I think it's fine. You know, Yorba Linda, back to your question, is a general law city, and yet they still go to the voters for approval. And they, in fact, did fight the state, and they were involved in a lawsuit. So, and their number is much, much lower. As was pointed out by one of the speakers, you know, 2,400 units is far much, far, far less a number, a far smaller number for a city that size than what Huntington Beach is faced with. So charter language usually is basic, because charter language, you invoke certain powers and authorities. And in this case, it's basically saying that it's going to give it to the voters for approval if there's a zoning change or a plan amendment that reaches that threshold of significant, having significant unavoidable impacts. In other words, would otherwise need a statement of overriding considerations. But there are a lot of, you know, based on conversations with Councilmember McKeon, a lot of zoning changes and general plan amendments that never reached that threshold. So even if they're city-initiated, they wouldn't go to the voters. It's only those rare instances where there's such a massive impact, permanent impact in the environment, that the voters would get to weigh in on whether those permanent, that permanent damage, so to speak, is acceptable based on the proposal. But many, 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 many other zoning changes and plan amendments never reached that threshold and would never go to the voters in the first place.
Well, based on some of the testimony here on the dais, there was concerns about the auto dealers or maybe the hotel industry. Would this affect them, and do they benefit off the city-initiated? Or if they did it, are they a private enterprise and have to do it on their own?
So this is probably something that could be answered by Councilmember McKeon, and also Viasnor as well. It's my understanding, based on the proposal, that this does not specifically, while the, while private businesses like developers, I'm sorry, dealerships and even other developers in the city benefit from the current zoning scheme, that if they wanted to go out and do their own EIR on a proposed project, and it presented significant unavoidable impacts, that because it's private-initiated, that it would not fall under this category.
Well, if you don't mind, if you don't mind answering a question, it's your proposal, Councilwoman McKeon. I would love to, because I don't want to affect the auto industry or the hotel industry in the, in the city, so.
Sure.
Do you have a response?
Yeah, I do. That's why I made the comment that it's tight, is that this only affects city-initiated general plan updates or zone changes. So if the auto dealers wanted to develop their property one day, that would be a private sector application. If through their project they want to get a zone change or update the general plan, that would not apply to them, because that's a private sector-led application or initiated by the private sector, this would not apply. So every, every developer of a project has to mitigate their environmental impacts. Now, they have current zoning and an EIR in the Beach Energy and Water Specific Plan, which is currently zoned. And so if they want to develop what's currently allowed in that specific plan, they can go forward as a private project or development, they probably won't need to update their EIR. But if they want to come forward with a bigger development that's not encapsulated in the existing EIR and that specific plan, and the staff says, hey, you guys are exceeding the specific plan and you might need to update the EIR, well, of course, they would have to pay for that and do their own EIR, but this would not trigger this charter amendment, because this, again, that would be a private sector-initiated project.
Okay. And if I And if I might just end on this, because there's always a narrative out there that the council majorities, NIMBY, and doesn't want development, I'll just speak for myself. Like, I'm totally against what the state's mandating here in Huntington Beach. I think it would urbanize our city and that's not what our suburban coastal committee wants. But if there's a development that fits in that suburban coastal feel, I would be very supportive of that. I am interested, and I will call the representative from the BIA that was here today, because he said if we went forward on this proposal, they'll just be able to build what they want. And my answer to that, and I'm going to sit down and talk to him because I have deep respect for him, if they were able to build what they want, if we pass this, wouldn't they want that? Wouldn't they want to build what they want? And then why oppose this measure if they get what they want? And that's what it did make, that didn't add up to me, that if you pass this measure, the BI and the developers will be able to do what they want, well, wouldn't they want to do what they want? And I am going to follow up because I do have deep respect for the representative here because I know he's just trying to do a good job for his members. So anyways, those are some of my concerns. And man, this is, this is not, this is not an easy vote because I do, I do agree with some of the arguments on the other side, but the overriding theme that I got from Jennifer Senor, our senior, is really, we're not talking about a lot of different things other than the housing element that this definition affects.
Councilmember. Well, just let me say something. I'll be really, really short. I actually want to thank Councilmember Kalmick for bringing that video forward. I completely empathize with Councilmember Wang's frustration with Sacramento's overreach and its abuse of power. I did talk to her. They are a general law city. This is not apples to oranges. And when I spoke to her, they actually fought, just like we're fighting. They exhausted every single one of their options as a general city. In Huntington Beach, we are fortunate that we still have a couple of paths forward that we can follow through, and they wish they had the same. So I want to thank you for that because seeing her frustration makes me understand, we're not the only ones that are fighting. There's many cities who want to fight this. But once again, they're not a charter city. They don't have the options or the resources we have. So that's all I have to say. Councilmember McKeon.
Thanks. I just want to reply from earlier from Councilmember Kalmick's comments and then my answer to someone, Tony. So first one, a resident said this, comparing what I said about us removing our discretion over a department's budget like the library to then this permanent damage to the environment is just not analogous. One, that's a department budget that will change throughout the year and we should have discretion over that. That should not go to a vote of the people. This is a permanent negative impact to the environment that cannot be undone. When it hits that high threshold, I don't feel it's appropriate that just four of us up here should make that decision. That's a massive decision that cannot be unchanged. That should go to the voters. You brought up a really interesting point. You made my point. We said that existing housing element EIR did not comprehend 41,000 units and only comprehended 20,000. But that's exactly what would happen in practicality. I am in development myself. 8,000 units for affordable housing, 20%, developers are not going to build more than 20 because it won't pencil financially. So of course, they're going to build 41,000 units. So the existing ER didn't even comprehend that. So that's how massive of a permanent change to our environment this will, this will create. Again, that's increasing our housing stock by like 50%. And this agenda item is such a high threshold, Tony mentioned it, it's very rare that this will be triggered because oftentimes with our general plan updates ourselves or initiated zoning change, there's mitigation measures the city can plan. The general plan updates take years to plan. They're in 20-year cycles. They take three years to draft. So we can very carefully plan ahead and put in mitigation measures to hit this high threshold. You mentioned SB 9, there's, we don't have any applications in the city, but it doesn't mean we won't have any. So what's wrong with protecting our community from disastrous Senate Bill 9 that was just unconstitutional? It says you can divide your single-family lot into two parcels and put a duplex on each. You can put four units on a single-family lot and not have any additional parking requirements. That's insane. Using fear tactics again, saying the city will rot. Well, this doesn't affect the private sector. So the private sector can still bring forward what the free market is demanding and develop responsibly. Tony touched on it. We're not anti-development, but we're for responsible development. And our general plan is carefully thought out and planned with future with, with resource documents and studies. So the private sector will develop what the market bears. So our city will never rot. The private sector will come through in the end. Let's see, it won't prevent general plan updates. That's not true. Of course, I just said we can, we can put in mitigation measures. I touched on the auto dealers. I spoke with one gentleman today about that. This does not affect the private sector. It's very tight, only city initiated. And when you really distill it down, this only gets triggered when we have to issue a statement of overriding considerations because we cannot mitigate the significant negative and permanent impacts to the environment. When that is triggered, I feel, and I believe in the mayor and the mayor pro tem feel, that should go to the vote of the people. This is permanent, cannot be undone. And you mentioned the air show, statement of overriding considerations on the negative impacts to the environment. That is a three-day event on non-summer days. That's temporary, where what we're talking about is permanent negative impacts to the environment that cannot be undone. And then, of course, the builder's remedy, scare tactic, the BIA gentleman touched on it. Again, I believe that the builder's remedy violates our charter. That's totally unconstitutional, in my opinion. How can a developer just come in, cast aside your zoning and general plan and build whatever they want and any type of zoning? That violates our charter, I feel is unconstitutional. And lastly, this is not just about the housing element. It's not just about housing. It's about any city-initiated general plan update or zone change. So I want to make that clear. It is not an attack on the housing element, but any city-initiated general plan update or zone change where the EIR finds there's significant negative and unavoidable impacts to the environment.
Councilmember Moser.
Thank you. While this is a, this is framed as a measure to protect our environment, it is in reality a politically motivated move that undermines our responsibility as elected officials to make informed decisions for the benefit of our city. To be clear, this proposal is not about genuine environmental protection. It is a tactic to delay and obstruct any development, leveraging environmental concerns only when it serves a political agenda. This kind of selective environmentalism is misleading and does disservice to our community. The economic impact of this proposal cannot be overstated. We are already facing significant budget deficits in the future. And the costs associated with legal battles and potential state penalties will only exacerbate this issue. We cannot survive a forever war with the state of California, a state within which we are a city. General law, no. Charter, yes, but still a part of the state of California. We do a disservice to our residents when we consistently seek to enrage them rather than to engage them. This approach will make it harder to address our very real housing needs in the future of our city. We should be working collaboratively with the community to develop solutions that meet state requirements while also reflecting local priorities, focusing on public outreach and education to ensure residents understand the importance of a compliant housing element. This proposed ballot measure is not what your representative government should be doing. This is not a way to fight. This is not a way to win. This is another bad tactic, another futile ploy. This proposed ballot measure creates more chaos. Chaos doesn't address homelessness, housing affordability, aging infrastructure, or climate resiliency. Chaos doesn't create jobs or a thriving city. Chaos does create a precariously shifting stage for political theater on which our city's future teeters. What should we be doing? We should be publicly, transparently, and honestly working with our experienced staff and negotiating with the state. We should adopt a housing, a compliant housing element. We should be engaging and educating the people on the facts and consequences of not doing so, including up to $600,000 a month in penalties, including builder's remedy, where buildings can come in and be developed, and you want to talk about the potential of an environmental impact that we have no control over. We should vote no on this item and not shirk our responsibility and our work. We should stop playing games with the people's money and with their future. Adopt a housing element, negotiate with the state, get the housing element certified. That is not 40,000 units, by the way. It is not. And if you watch on the housing element meetings that we had so many of, you'll see what the housing element, which is a plan, is. It is not a mandate to build. It is a plan for our city so that we can have some control over what we're going to do for our future. We want to avoid builder's remedy, retain local control, and I urge my colleagues to vote no on this item. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, this, I don't believe this is a, it's, the intent of this is to be political. Housing needs, the same, the words, the slogan, whatever is manufactured, situation, crisis, to kind of really urbanize our country, our city, and basically, in my eyes, almost ruin it. Often, really, often the state amends laws to strengthen them from holes discovered through litigation or challenges. This charter change does this for the people of HB. It just changes it to make, strengthen our charter. This amendment will strengthen it, our charter, from attacks and degradation from outside overreach, often with nefarious intention, with risk to lower our quality of life. Even without and independent of the tyrannical overreach of the Newsom administration or Bonta and his harassment lawsuits, this is good for HB, Huntington Beach. This charter change strengthens our charter with the intention to keep Huntington Beach a better place to live and to govern ourselves. It, as witnessed by some of the lawsuits that have come out, if there is no fight, there is no win. And I, Huntington Beach is worth the fight for. That's all. I think we, I'm willing to fight for it, and that's why I'm for this. I'm for a lot of the things we're doing. And I believe it's, our city is worth keeping the beautiful town it is without destroying it through overbuilding. And like these guys, some of these guys have said, I'm not against progress, development, but responsible development. If it's irresponsible or disrespectful to the people in this city, I'm not going to go for it. Overbuilding is overbuilding and we've got to keep it within reason. And that's what the state's trying to mandate for, I think, to save, to manufacture slogans and housing needs and stuff. So with that, I'm fully supportive of this, to strengthen it for the city of Long Beach and the people who live here.
Okay.
Huntington Beach, I'm sorry.
And I would like to, I would like to echo what a couple of my fellow council members here said. We are not against development. We are against our city being turned into Los Angeles. If I wanted to live in LA, I would have stayed there. I didn't. And I will protect my city. Councilmember Kalmick compared this to library operations. The library operations is not going to affect our water bed, our air quality, traffic, ecological reserves. That's not a fair comparison. Once again, it's fear mongering. You compare it to the air show. Well, the air show is a three-day event. It is not a permanent, high-density development that will essentially change our city completely. So that's also a misrepresentation. Does anybody else have anything to say? Councilmember Kalmick.
Thank you. I wanted to address some of the concerns, I think, that Councilmember Strickland had when you're asking questions about criteria for significance and who determines that threshold. Effectively, there, the thresholds are set by statute and state law changes all the time. So this will effectively put a rock in the river and SEQA could just move around us. And then everything the city initiates could have a level of significance, right? Could significant unavoidable impacts because SEQA sets a threshold way up here and no matter what mitigation we have for anything, because the threshold got set super high, greenhouse gases for emission, for example, any moderate development, low, like something that we all like, could trigger that. Now, that would be on the side of the city initiating that. So when you talk about the, the auto dealers, right? Each one of those, each auto dealer that would want to do something would have to pay to amend the zoning, the zoning for the beach engine corridor specific plan.
It's like every developer would do, so.
Individually, though. The goal is that the city takes on this burden with programmatic EIRs, very similar to how we did the beach engine corridor specific plan in the first place, which allowed a lot of the auto dealers to enhance their properties. Same thing with the downtown specific plan, right? We amended the downtown specific plan in the early aughts in order to allow, you know, for some of the hotel development that we've seen, right? If we needed to, if we need to obviously do something in downtown, and I think it's a strategic plan of this council to do that, we're going to have to amend the downtown specific plan. And in order to do that, it's likely going to have an environmental document, which will have a statement of overriding consideration, which will add time to go out to the voters. The reason, I would answer the question, the reason the BIA doesn't necessarily want this and they want voter's remedy because of the ambiguity, right? We know that business likes just even keel. They don't like things changing on them a lot. And state law could easily change on builder's remedy tomorrow. Actually, there's a hearing today for Assemblymember Wick's bill to enhance builder's remedy. I don't believe we're going to be able to do a general plan amendment ever in this city without a statement of overriding consideration because of greenhouse gas emissions, short-term noise, and short-term air quality issues because of construction. Construction makes noise and it's going to violate our thresholds for sound. The thresholds that exceed those, especially for general plans and some of the larger documents, including the housing element, are educated guesses, right? Like the threat, the noise threshold is based on a model. It doesn't mean that road noise is going to be that high. And some of the, the discussion here we're having is on permanent, I think the city attorney said, a rare impact that is not going to damage or have permanent impacts. Short-term noise from construction is not a permanent impact. And if you review the housing elements impacts, which I think I stated and kind of went through each one of them, the permanent impacts are not to our wetlands. They're not to our water quality. They're artificial thresholds that are set under SEQA that talk about noise and dust and, and the urban water management plan didn't calculate water out there, but if you talk to the water folks, we've got plenty of water. And then the fact that I think that Councilmember Wang said in Yorba Linda is that this is not a building target, it's a planning target. And if you look at our fifth housing cycle, what got built, right? That the free market, as Councilmember Keon said, still has to step in here. So this conversation about a permanent damage to the environment, the housing element doesn't do that. It talks about road noise. It talks about short-term air quality concerns because of potential construction of these buildings, whatever they may be. And again, the free market will fit into that. So that's where SEQA is. And if SEQA didn't exist and if the state exempts housing elements and zoning text amendments associated with them, which is not a, could easily happen in order because the state wants to build housing, this, this charter amendment becomes moot and all it does is affect our ability to pass a general plan update. Maybe there's a hazard update. Maybe there's a coastal resiliency update that we have to pass. We're going to have to lag on it and potentially miss out on funding because we're going to have to go to the voters and put it on the ballot. Either spend a million dollars for a special or wait a year or two for a general election. I would address Mayor Pro Tem Burns's comments about that this strengthens our charter. This doesn't actually change any policy or doesn't change law. All it does is give something that we would vote on as the council to the voters. And so it doesn't protect us from Sacramento. In fact, it probably makes us in worse shape from Sacramento again because we know our voters. Our voters don't want housing. And if you put something on the ballot that contemplates housing with esoteric environmental concerns that are very complicated, if you dig into what the actual concerns are and what they could be, they're not, it's not a smokestack coming out. It's additional cars and it's additional people. And our, we know our residents are not going to vote for that. So what happens at the end of this, right? If we put a green light initiative on the ballot and it passes and we are forced by a judge to pass our housing element because, say we lose, then we got to go to our voters and they still vote no. Then what? Now, we've spent money, time, fines, and we're back to where we, we're back to square one where we still don't have a valid housing element. There is no other city that has had a council that puts, this is, the voters are the ones that go collect signatures and put these on the ballot for cities because they want that. I guess, I mean, the voters could decide, but like, again, it's going to be a hard decision for them and they don't have time to analyze what the actual charter amendment is because we haven't seen it yet. And we're going to have to, I mean, the timeline is so short and I don't think there's going to be- to be six of us, seven of us here for the next council meeting, so we're going to have to call a special meeting for that. And to have, call a special meeting on like a Friday to put a charter amendment on in November at the last possible day without any vetting or public discourse is a really kind of, really bad thing, I think, to do to our residents. And I think it's going to, it's going to be a problem, and it's going to be this issue that really nobody knows how it got there, and it shows up on the ballot, and people are going to say, well, yes, I love to vote for things, so let's vote for it. Flash forward to April 20, of '25, and we're being asked, we have to call a special election because the state has said you have to pass housing element, and now we've got to go to the voters. And so we're years out on this, and I don't believe we can afford the fines from the state. So I don't know if I wouldn't roll the dice with this. We could pass a housing element tomorrow, and we've passed, you know, and you asked the question, how many statements of overriding consideration have we done? One, this, in the last two years, but prior to that, Beach Edge and Quarter, specifically, specific plan, the general plan, downtown specific plan, those were all city-initiated items. I believe the Belatera specific plan was also city-initiated. But I just worry that the state will change the thresholds, and anything the city does that has an EIR into it will create significant thresholds, and we'll have to go out to the voters. So it's, it's the unknown of what the state can do, because we don't control what the state does, and they set the CEQA criteria. If we can set those ourselves, then sure, we could potentially, we can set them to what we want locally, have a local control, but we have no control over that. And to throw an anchor for us to say, well, anytime that happens, well, we don't have control over what the metric is. And then we end up literally having to have five votes a year because CEQA gets weird, and we know CEQA's weird, and there's talk of CEQA reform, and it could blow, it could just blow, they could set the threshold so high for some very lofty goal, and we will always have an SOC for anything the city wants to do. And I think it's on the city to have big, grand plans. And that's what we got elected to do. And if we want to redo the commercial area or the industrial area, if it has any contemplation of changing anything, knocking buildings down, construction, we will have a statement of overriding consideration, we'll have to go to the voters, which will add time and money to that, which we don't have. So I just wanted to at least address some of those concerns in a little bit greater detail.
I'll just finish with, the next shoe to drop with the state and these, and these mandates is it's not just going to be a planning document they're talking about now actually requiring production of housing. So requiring that the private sector produce housing or cities will be penalized, that's the next shoe to drop. And this fight is worth everything, and if we don't fight, it's over anyway, it doesn't matter. Removing our local control, I always say, if the state can come in and mandate how you zone your city and have a one-size-fits-all solution for every city, and every city's different, every city's unique, size, geography, topography, environmental elements, if the state can come in and subvert your local control from hundreds of miles away, then why even have city council members that are elected by the people that are closest to the people? And it's just not going to stop until we fight and, and stop it. And so this is just another measure to protect our local control, and if, as Councilmember Kelmick said, in the future, if we bring a plan forward and there's significant negative impacts to the environment that we can't mitigate, but we think it's very beneficial to the community, it's on us to, to sell it to the community, tell why it is, why this zone change is important, why this general plan update's important, and then let them decide, because again, this will be significant negative impacts to the environment and most likely permanent. That's it.
Okay. I just wanted to make one more note, it's short. One, I think that this really is rushing this process to put a charter amendment on the ballot. Just given the timeline, I don't think it's appropriate that we don't have more discussion, study session, things like that, for any time we have any changes to our charter. Also, I think it's important to note, and I forgot to mention, that, you know, we are foregoing grant funding in an ongoing manner, specifically with things like SB 2 funding to fund our homeless shelter, our navigation center for those operations. In addition, you know, it was discussed how it's difficult for these types of properties developments to pencil out, and that's true. And that's why it's so important that there are ways to mitigate that when it comes to affordable, affordable housing, low-income housing. For instance, the Orange County Housing Finance Trust is an entity, you know, in the, in the county with many member cities, of which we are one, and they help developers in cities help these projects pencil out by providing basically gap funding for those. We're currently ineligible for any of those funds, so we are not able to do things like we did previously with our Jamboree project for seniors, where we did get funding for that. We're not able to assist our community by providing balanced housing for those developments that don't pencil out, because we're ineligible for things that are supposed to help us out with that. And I think it's important for the residents to know that as well. It's not just about builder's remedy, it is also about really the inability to provide housing for our community, for our seniors, for our people who are serving our community, and we need to think about everyone, not just those who are here right now, but those who want to come and serve in this community, or who maybe are living in very dense circumstances in apartments, maybe multiple families to a home. Well, some other areas in the community have very not dense areas, our single-family residences, where there's one person living in a four-person, a home, a home that is meant for a family, right? And what do we do with that? I'm not quite sure, but we need to have those conversations. We need to actively work to find ways to develop housing for our community. And that is one thing that this ballot measure is not seeking to do in any active way. And I think it's incumbent on this council to really start being honest and doing that type of work for our community. Thank you.
Here, and I said last thing, but one last thing. So one of the biggest fallacies of the, of the 20% affordable housing inclusionary rate is that it creates affordable housing. It actually has the inverse effect, because the other 80% are subsidizing those 20%. We're a 95% built-out community, there's not enough land, as someone mentioned earlier, to build single-family homes. So all likelihood, those will have to be high-density apartments. 80% have to subsidize the 20, that means that 80% will get top-of-market rents in order to afford those 20%. And what that does is it drives up the rental market for the entire city, thereby making the entire city more unaffordable, because all rents are comp-based. I know this because I own a Ford Flex across in Belatera. I don't push rents, but when a tenant moves out, I always look across the street and see what Belatera is getting for their, for their units, and they're always minimum 50% higher. So I'm going to, of course, try to meet close to what they're providing, but that's what happens, is the 80% that subsidize the 20 drive up the rental market for the entire city and make the entire city more unaffordable. So once, it has an inverse effect from the, from the intended goal.
We don't have a healthy rental market with a very low vacancy rate, and I think that's important, too.
Okay, we, we have a motion in a second.
Ready?
Yep.
Let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser.
I abstain based on the rushing of this process.
Bolton.
Abstain.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKean.
Yes.
Kelmick.
Abstain.
Motion passes 403. Moser, Bolton, Kelmick abstaining.
Thank you. Do I have a?